Let's uh. Bring the March nineteenth, twenty twenty four special meeting of the Big Bear Area Regional Wastewater A D P. All order. Uh, board member.
Hey, you want me to flag your ladies?
Yes.
I'm flagging ladies and students of Latin of the United States of America. And to the Republican which stands one nation.
We think we have public forum at this time and then the board. So Jesus, should we move this to the end of the meeting? Bring back on the.
I would be do both. I would like people to.
Can't hear you.
An opportunity to speak before an.
Well, you can't on public forum, I can't any item on the agenda. Uh, okay, so I this is items not on the agenda. We're gonna move to that. Do I find the board members? Okay, we'll move back to that slide. Um, item number four, old business, we have no business.
No.
All right, so now we're going to move on to new business, which is the discussion item on the replenishment options. Mr. Lawrence.
All right, well, I just wanna welcome everyone today to our meeting and and thanks everyone for coming out so and uh. Reporting and giving your input onto this project. Well, just uh. I don't know, do you wanna? We'll just we'll just go right into the to the presentation. So. Well, here we are today. Go to the next slide.
I'll keep a reminder, everybody please silence your phones if you have a. I gotta read on this. I can't hear you. Is it not is it not loud enough or?
Or undep. Okay, so I'm just gonna go over the board. Actually, this project's been going on since two thousand and fifteen. Uh, the governing board has approved or adopted sixty one actions and forty one meetings for the replenishment project. Uh, it is consistent with our budget plan and our vision for Barwa, just to let everybody know. I am gonna have Bridget Burton and Christine Bennett give their presentation, and I'm gonna be available for questions. And filling all the questions for the board. Along with, yes, just thank you for the reminder. Just wanted to let everyone know that we do have Glenn Jack Jackman from C S D here. Uh, the general manager for C S D, uh, the general manager for Reggie Lamson from D W P. And then the board chair for Steve Lubicky for M W B. Isn't that your title, board chair or the president?
The president.
Okay, the present board president. Um, so and they'll be helping with the presentation, so they'll have parts in with the presentation.
Okay, the following four slides are based upon funding from the Wipia loan. A detailed project budget has been maintained since the beginning of the project and throughout the planning process. Updates to the budget have been brought before the governing board on several occasions. Additionally, without a detailed project budget, Barwa would not have been selected for grants and also would not have come this far in the Wipia loan process. The current budget is approximately eighty six million and is broken down on this slide. Total projects cost, project costs, including financing and funding are approximately eighty six million. I'm sorry, let me start that. Total project costs, including financing funded costs are approximately sixty four million, sorry. The contingency is approximately twenty two million as a result of E P A's request to have the agency include sufficient contingency mentioned of project costs. There is a handout that has been provided to you with a more detailed breakdown of the budget. This handout is a summary of a comprehensive budget workbook that is updated as changes occur.
But Chris, I just wanna clarify this because it's a little confusing for me, and I've been over this several times. The project cost of sixty four million dollars, that's the adopted project project cost plus on top of that, the contingency which we built in. The contingency, this particular contingency is substantial at twenty two million. That's a requirement of the Wipia loan. Is that correct?
The Wipia loan, yeah, the E P. So what the E P A has experienced with other loans is that some of these other agencies have not figured in a sufficient amount of contingency into their loan amount. And what's happened is project costs have gone up, and now the agency is stuck not having enough funding for that loan or for that project. And they cannot go back to Wipia for an additional amount. So then they're forced to find funding elsewhere. So this is why the E P A asked us to make sure we have a sufficient amount of contingency in this project so. That uh, that so that this wouldn't happen.
Yeah, so is there really a general plan?
Well, I understand. I just wanna assure myself and everybody else regarding this because that contingency is massive. I'm used to five percent, maybe it's much less than ten percent. And this is thirty plus percent, which is almost unheard of.
Yeah.
This board is going to be in charge of. Maintaining, going through, assuring that we stick to our budget through this process. This is not an open checkboard. For eighty six million dollars, that is just not acceptable to me or I think for any board member here to allow that to happen. This is more of a requirement for getting the loan. This is not a twenty two million dollars extra dollars floating around that could be spent on anything here.
Exactly.
But I have that correct?
Yes, you do.
Okay, and I wanna make sure that's clear to the board members as well as to the public because this number of eighty six million is a huge amount compared to what we were initially talking about, the fifty seven million. We increased a little bit and then added more for our own contingency, which is a reasonable contingency of the five, six percent, somewhere in that nature. Okay, thank you.
Can I say something?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, but if the E P A is used to people running over, isn't there a probability that that could happen?
I'll I'll speak. Because I've gone through projects before in Barwa. I've been here the longest. I've been here for eighteen years. Is it possible? I've seen contingencies of two percent, three percent as a possibility. I have never seen thirty percent. And if we're at thirty percent, if we've been going down that road, we've made some major mistake with the engineers or something down the line because that's unacceptable.
It is that the EPA recommended, right?
So so the way this works is that the EPA said, you get one shot at this. You have one time at the table. So make sure that you have every bit of funding that you need in there. We originally applied for sixty two million dollars before we had any other federal grants. So as we've been getting federal grants, and again, we don't have signed contracts with them yet, they said, continue with the amounts that we that you originally applied for because. Until those grants are all signed off and and dated, we can ensure that you're gonna get additional federal money. Because we are limited to that eighty percent number, and I know that's a little confusing, but there there is. They they recommended us continue with the amount we originally proposed. So that was their recommendation, and we went with that recommendation. Then all it meant is that we had to push the what it looks like. We had to put the contingency in, and it looks like the project cost, which is not. We're we're all clear on that, that it is not. Just to reiterate, the the project cost estimate has not been updated since twenty twenty three. So nothing has changed, even though we're moving on with this loan and you see a bigger number in there. Nothing has changed since twenty twenty three. So we're continuing with this, the same amounts that we showed back in twenty twenty three, and you'll see that later on in the slides. I I um, we we will not see this. Obviously, this is a huge contingency that we're not gonna see, and that's not gonna be an issue for us. We've not never seen a thirty percent like uh, like Mr. Harris said. Um, most of our projects come in between one to five percent onto onto budget. That's where we are, and you'll see that in our last budget, we did one percent of our of budget.
One 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 other quick comment, I just still to clarify that this is a drawdown loan. We're not borrowing this money upfront. If if we take it out of that account as we build the project, and also there is still a potential for grants. Uh, to supplement that loan amount. So even if we don't lose the sixty four million, we can return that money back to Wipia and be just charged and just right on what are the back balances.
Yeah, we only draw what we need for construction during construction, so we'll only draw this as we need it. The drawdowns will be controlled, um, and we'll only draw what we need during for that period for construction. It never, we'll never draw all fifty one, fifty seven million, we'll never draw all that. And as we do, we have another grant application in for nine million dollars. Uh, for federal grants and that and uh, we just got another million dollars. I'm I'm sure everybody's aware of that. We just got another million dollars uh, two weeks ago um, from Dia and Openalti. And all that does is that fifty seven drops to fifty six. I mean, as those federal dollars come in, we're limited by 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 regulation to limit our. Uh, federal dollars to eighty percent and our grant funding to twenty five percent of the entire project. So it's hopefully that's clear to everybody that it's not gonna happen.
Well, the bottom line is this board has to watch over what's taking place. We have approved budgets, and if anything changes, it has to come back to the board for approval. This is not, again. This is not money that's let city of the bank.
Right.
It's spent, this is drawdown money, as our chairman said, and and that's how it's going to be used as you go through the project.
And every step of the way for construction, design, planning, all these different steps of the way, the board has an opportunity to weigh in on those costs. They can compare it to the budget. So we we just entered into design contract for three point eight million dollars. See, the design's up there for three point nine million dollars. Obviously, that's lower than we just awarded a contract for, right? So every step of the way, the board has an opportunity to compare the award awarded contract against the budget and say, okay, well, that there's a about a million dollars saved there. And we uh, that will happen with construction. So every step of the way, all those contracts get awarded by our awarding body.
Well, that's. The numbers are driven by the, I'll call it designers, engineers. This is not a number that as board members we've come up with, that you've come up with. These these are hard numbers. They understand the cost of valves, they understand the cost of plumbing, they understand the cost of osmosis. Again, all the processes, they're gonna go into this. They get all it, they know the pricing on it, they accumulate it, they come up with their budget.
Yeah, they they have, it's not only an engineer, but also he's a licensed contractor. So it had lots of experience bidding projects all throughout California and throughout the United States, and they have been have cost comparisons for each item that that they're planning on bidding. Now, of course, as we refine the design, those those cost estimates will be updated and be brought back to the board for consideration.
And they could go down.
They could go down, and they could go down. And and again, because we don't, we we, as we refine that process, it is a good possibility. Again, you know, there's a good possibility for all these numbers to change. As we saw, the design just just went down from three point eight to three point.
I just did.
Three point nine to.
And this is an example, our bridge that was built at the dam was initially a six to five million dollar bridge and actually came in under sixty million dollars. So. I mean, to say that it doesn't go down, it really depends on factors that are going on at every particular time. So if you wait too long, things will go. But uh, but anyways, I've seen projects go down, come in under budget many times. Thank you.
All right.
The funding plan, approved by the governing board, included the funding sources listed on this slide. Operating revenues include annual charges or sewer user fees. For annual charges for fiscal year twenty five through twenty seven are set to build retard reserves. And for fiscal year twenty eight through twenty nine are set to cover operating expenses and annual debt service. Operating expenses include general O and M, water quality monitoring, and new clean offset. Fiscal year twenty eight is a partial year, October through December through June. The Wipia debt service for fiscal year twenty five to twenty seven is interest only through construction. Fiscal year twenty eight through twenty nine is the full debt service, interest and principal. The Wipia loan is based on a four and a half percent interest rate, and the bonds are based on a five and a half percent interest rate. This will your twenty six bond debt service is a partial year. Total capital expenditure for fiscal year twenty five through twenty eight are approximately seventy seven million. This does speak for the big contingency to have a balanced budget. This is what is left of the approximately eighty six million when accounting for expenditures based to date and those expected to be expended in fiscal year twenty four. All capital expenditures will be paid using grant funding and debt. Wipia loan draws are based on program costs and will be taken in multiple draws as funds are needed. Interest will be paid on the amount drawn through construction. The agency has been awarded or recommended for grant funding in the amount of approximately seventeen point nine million. There's currently an application that has been submitted for an additional nine million.
Excuse me, uh, just a little disagree. Um, like you said before, the project has been going since twenty fifteen. And the four general managers of uh, uh, M W D, D W C, C S D and Barwa all got together and started searching for grants. And we went, Sapa was administer during a huge amount of money that was uh, being provided by the Department of Water Resources, the major state agency. And little big bear went down there, the four of us, and presented this project to them. We worked in Sapa regulates. Um, or is involved with water agencies from Bayberry all the way down to the beach along the San Ana River, so huge area. And they had broke this funding down into two pieces, basically people south of Prado Dam and people north of our agencies, north of Prado Dam. Uh, when we came there, we started in the back of the room. By the time they were ready to award, uh, we not only were successfully getting the four point five million dollars. Uh, but we were ranked the number one project uh, north of Prado Dam. So we competed against all these huge agencies. And Sapa felt that our project more than the number one ranking. So uh, we were really proud of our project. And uh, by the time they were awarded, we were sitting at the lead table. So uh, it is a, it's not a project that just the four of us came up with. It it was approved by a regional agency of being a very good project. So I just wanted to get a little history. Because I'm the last remaining G M that started it back in twenty fifteen.
Thanks, Reggie. In March of twenty twenty three, the governing board adopted the five year rating schedule, which was required by Wipia. The fiscal year twenty four rate increase of twenty two and a half percent has been implemented with the total R V D monthly rate of four dollars and thirty one cents. Fiscal year twenty five through twenty eight adopted rates are subject to reaffirmation by the governing board annually. C S D adopted the fiscal year twenty four rates in May of twenty three. The city of Big Bear Lake adopted the entire rate schedule in June of twenty three, and the county of San Bernardino absorbed the rate increases for fiscal year twenty four.
I just to clarify this. On this one particular chart, so basically the loan, the federal loan required us to come up with a five year rate schedule. It's how the loan required.
Yeah, we we were required to show them that we could pay, we had the funds to fund the debt service moving forward.
Right, so we did, we had that. Um, and then we affirmed it as a board, I guess we affirmed it twenty twenty three or twenty four.
Twenty three. Twenty twenty three, we started it for five dollars and seventy nine cents.
So the the five year rate schedule, this five year for Wipia actually started in twenty.
Twenty four, yeah, twenty four. So the twenty two point five percent has is already been implemented.
Yes, it has.
So all the repairs are currently paying that increase towards this loan.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
That that includes both C S D, the city and and Fonkin, very high county area. All three areas are are already, uh, it's already on the the tax roll that way.
Thank you.
Next, we wanted to go through the loan process. Each of these dates represents an action that the board took to make the to move the Wipia loan forward. First in September of twenty two, we submitted our letter of interest, and we were invited to apply in October of twenty two. In June of twenty three, we submitted our application and the EPA earmarked the funds for our project. In February of twenty four, we received the Build America by American waiver, and during that same time period, the agency worked with the EPA on due diligence review, agreement language and terms, and negotiations with our member agencies. We we expected the board to consider the approval for the Wipia loan next month with closing shortly thereafter. Oops. So in August of twenty one, our legal counsel presented options to the board for funding for the project, and they also appropriated funds to have the project included into the rate study. In January of twenty two, they were presented with the rates based on that wholesome funding plan, and in March of twenty two, they approved the fiscal year twenty three draft budget with adoption in April. And on July first, twenty twenty two, we began the collection of rates for replenish. In July of twenty two, the board declared intent to issue those tax exempt obligations. That's the first step for that three point four million dollar short term financing. And in September, the board was presented once again with updated debt financing of project capital cost, and that included the Wipia loan and the short term loan. In December of twenty two, they appropriated additional funds for pre and post startup costs. And then another presentation was in January of twenty three by the financial advisors that also included Wipia and that short term loan. In February of twenty three, there was another rate study presentation that included these rates for replenish. In March of twenty three, the board was, the board approved the fiscal year twenty four draft budget and adopted it later that month with that five year rate schedule that was required by Wipia. In December of twenty three, the board unanimously adopted the amendments required by Wipia, and those were sent to member agencies for consideration. In February of this year, the board was presented with a fiscal year twenty five draft budget that included those rates that were adopted in March of twenty three.
I can make just one comment. Yes. Uh, intertwined in this, after the rates were looked at and approved by this board, they were sent to the member agencies, and each of the member agencies. Community Services District, Big Bear City, City of Big Bear Lake did a two eighteen.
Protest hearing.
Protest, thank you. Protest theory on this. Uh, and we approved, we just look at the level, I know the C S D level approved the the two eighteen process. And then once that process was over, then approved the rates as well from that point. That's correct. Okay, I didn't see those dates on here, but they're intertwined in here.
They're intertwined because we didn't track, we didn't show or tracked the the dates that the city or C S D. Oh, we actually did, we did. It's on the previous slide, we did, we did talk about when they actually implemented those those dates or adopted those rates structure. Was in um, that the previous slide with.
May for C S D and June for the city.
Right, but prior to that, we were doing our agency, which is the city, was doing the two eighteen process.
Yes, the whole time, you know, everybody has to, I mean, that's a requirement by law to to implement new rate structures. Is that that the city, C S D and the county do a prop two eighteen and send those notices out to all all of its residents. For confirmation of the rate structure.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go down. I just, yeah, I just wanted to clarify that too, so that everybody knows and understands. The 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 bar of board establishes the rate for operations of this facility and then passes that on to local jurisdictions to then then to adopt it in their budget. So it's really a piece of that process. And one that's established here, that we're all represented by the various jurisdictions, all represented by us, and then those jurisdictions then have one more opportunity without that rate and. Also again, add your additional costs that we need to implement the the waste water system, including their local improvement.
Yeah, each of the agencies have their own cost for their collection systems, and those that, uh, in addition to the borrowers rate, there's a collection rate as well that's adopted at that at that similar here.
And then David, I, do you wanna explain real quick the the Buy America waiver?
Sure, it is a, and then it's like, yeah, so the that, it's called a battle waiver, buy America, build America. It's a waiver that the federal government put in place, excuse me, it's a, it's a requirement that the federal government put in place. That if you're spending any kind of federal dollars, you have to buy American products, right? So that's that's the requirement. Since this project was started back in two twenty, officially started back in twenty seventeen, I think they look back all the way to twenty seventeen. They said, oh, you started this project before that requirement became into in place. So they gave us what we call a battle waiver, um, and that that goes along with the Wipia loan, that that battle waiver, which. Allows us to save about twenty five percent when we're bidding the projects. That's that's the estimate so far.
But not all the equipment that we need is produced in the U S.
There is some equipment that is that is foreign. Uh, there's a, there's some equipment that's produced in Israel that we might be purchasing, we're not quite sure yet. Um, and it depends on the the bidding process. We have a formal bidding process that has to go on.
But under, excuse me, yeah, I do hope to answer your question. All right, there is no problem. Um, so there really, once, I mean, this is a one time waiver, once this, if this is not utilized at this point, then we basically is an addition twenty five percent on confidence funding cost if we go a different direction.
We if we if we lose the, if we lose the Babham waiver from the Wipia loan process. The all, because of the grant, because of the federal money from the grants, we would be required to include that restriction into our bidding documents. Which uh, they're estimating right now about a twenty five percent increase. So in essence. We would get grants for about twenty five percent of the project, and then it would cost us about twenty five percent of the project cost. So it will be a.
What's the highest question? Okay, and I called you and asked you.
Yes.
Um, it's not that we're going to eliminate buying American. That is twenty five percent of what we spend is not going towards American companies. Not, that's not the point.
No.
We're gonna, we're gonna go with the lowest bid.
It's the lowest bid, and and we we can actually specify whether we prefer American products. There's a lot of American products that that we use here at the plant. Most, most of what we use is American products in the plant because a lot of foreign products are used, they have a metric system, and we don't use metric here. We use, you know, uh, we use the English system. And so most of what we buy is American products. But again, you know, that's where, so we're not specifying that we're not gonna use American products, just it means that we have a waiver from requiring them to do to do it that way.
Okay, I appreciate that. You bet.
Wipia does require amendments to our E P A operating agreements. Those modifications were required to clarify the existing terms of the J P A, the operating agreement number one. So that the EPA have a clear understanding of the creditworthiness for the Wipia loan process, the risks associated with lending to the agency, and to reduce the risk of payment default. Both Barwa and the city of Big Bear Lake have approved those amendments. The county of San Bernardino is currently using them, and as of last week indicated that they were accepting the modified language.
So. I have a good question. You know, any questions? Well, how old is our D P A at this point?
Uh, our J P A was established in nineteen seventy four.
So we're looking at a J P A that was established in South McLean, only had several amendments to that. And so now we have Wipia people coming in and wanting us to up update that language. Is that correct?
That's correct, and and we have very similar language in the past when we issued the bonds for construction of the horse main from the city of Big Bear Lake. Uh, for some of the other construction, it actually had very similar language, just older, and so it's, but it was specifically geared to the the bonds for those uh, for the horse main. And I believe it was also some of the other construction happening around the plant. So we're modifying that to update it as it goes on.
So it's really the function of the, you know, the mortgage industry, again, requiring another page design or ad.
It's just a, it's just a level of, it's really, it really, what the. What the amendment accomplishes is to say that C S D and the city and the county are not going to leave the surface of of Barwa until those loans are paid off. That's all it does. Um, that's the only requirement it has. That's all it does. Um, that's the only requirement it has is, is that it, it really just sets that up to, to ensure that the loans are paid off and that no other agencies will leave BARWA's service until that, those loans are paid off. That's what it does.
Thank you.
Uh, you actually just sparked a thought. Um, with this JPA going back to nineteen seventy-three.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four. And the plant basically being started or built here with assistance of CSD in nineteen seventy-seven. If I got that correct.
Nineteen seventy-seven, it, we made a bunch of modifications. I think CSD built the plant originally in nineteen sixty-four. Um, and the city was on its own using, uh, Stanville Marsh as a, a previous holding pond until there was, um, some sort of leak into the lake way back when.
Right. Well, I guess the point is, um, because regulations change all the time. They get more restrictive.
Yes.
And that's one of the reasons for forming the JPA in the first place. If you go back, I'll say fifty years, but maybe it's longer than that. The disposal of sewage was basically a cesspool under your house. Uh, until some pipes were connected and then some collection was taking place. So it's been a process we've gone through where there was actually years ago a concern if there were no cesspools or no septic systems, our water was not going back into our groundwater. Although it wasn't the cleanest water going into our groundwater. Um, so we've evolved to the point where, uh, through regulation, we're at where we are right now. Where it's always changing from, again, cesspools to collection to processing all through this JPA and all driven by regulations through the fifty years or so that we've been at this.
Yeah, fifty plus years have definitely, obviously we've seen an iteration of different, uh, permits and you know, we've gotten to where we're at now with our current permits. Obviously there's updates every five years. We get a new permit and we, and they ask us you know, for additional information or sometimes it stays the same. It depends on that whole situation.
But it just keeps getting, it doesn't go down.
Doesn't go down and the restrictions.
And more expensive to, uh.
And, and, yeah. And, and the, and the benefit of BARWA obviously is the economist scales, right? We have one, one place to treat all of the wastewater that comes out throughout the valley. And this is the place that it happens and it's economist scales having this one location. And that's why they started this original JPA. Right? And you know, the regular agency, when there was that spill, said, no more over here. Now you have to do something and that's why everybody started joining up and, and making.
I usually would have happened anyways. I mean, when I, when I saw it was unacceptable.
Yeah.
Way to handle your, uh, your WIPIA salary. Yeah.
Agreed. Sorry. All right. Are we got more members?
Larry.
Eric, I'm sorry.
I would agree that the standards become more stringent. Because as of December nineteenth, the state approved what is now being called toilet-to-tap. It allows processes to occur that we were not allowed to do in nineteen seventy-seven, and that's why the outfall line was built.
That's right.
Things sometimes change for the better.
Right. But remember with that regulation that you're talking about, and I, A B five seventy-four, I think it is, that allows for the direct reuse of water, which is not the plan here, which is being overlooked. Okay, that's not the plan here. Um, that, those, those have, the, so the, the system that we're putting in place, they have, they're, are tending towards the similar requirements that we're putting in, in place. So the water that we're producing likely will have the, the same treatment train that they're going to propose in that, uh, in that, um, legislation. They're working on that now.
Do you accept that the regulation plant in Orange County, which perpetually is the largest in the world, doesn't do all the steps we're doing?
They, uh, they inject into the ground, not into a, and not into a, uh, protected lake water body. And so it's a little different process, obviously. They have, and, and remember too, there's all this grandfather stuff because Orange County's been doing it for a long time. Um, and so there's a little bit of a grandfather clause and that, just like Lake Alasmar has a grandfather clause, because they discharge water into their lake and it's a little different.
If I could answer that.
Yeah.
I took an extensive tour of that plan. And, um, it is reverse osmosis. It's not the same process we're looking to here, but they're essentially using the water they're injecting back into the ground because of saltwater intrusion. The level of water that's being used in Orange County being pumped out of the ground is actually a lot of saltwater, turned into the, uh, freshwater pools. And so that was the barrier that was put basically right along the coastline to try to prevent saltwater intrusion. So it wasn't used directly for drinking, but it would be pumped back in. But I think that's one of the reasons why as well. They had, uh, different rules, but still running reverse osmosis, creating almost drinking water, like the water I saw when I was there.
And I think that, you know, the state is looking at it because they do do it in other countries now. Israel is one of them. They do it in now. Uh, this, this, you know, uh, you know, direct reuse. Again, not planned, non-planned here, okay? Just to be clear. But that's, that's, uh, one of the things that, that's why the state is looking at that regulation. Did that help that I learned?
What I was getting at is that they're using microfiltration, which we are.
Mm-hmm.
They're using the reverse osmosis, which we are, UV, which we are. And to keep in mind that I acknowledge that the technology is established. It's not magic. We are not misleading people. Okay, I grant you that. That's not my issue.
No, no, I, I, yeah. And, and by the way, we have this oxide, or adding an oxidant to our process, and I don't know that they do there. I don't think, I don't recall them doing that there. Uh, so our oxidant destroys all the pesticides, antifarmaceuticals, all that kind of stuff. That's, that's what the oxidant does. And we add that prior to the UV disinfection. So that whole process, um, that's the one thing that they're probably not doing, uh, but that we will be doing.
But David, let's be clear. By the time it gets to the process that you're talking about, we're talking about parts per million and parts per billion. I mean, it's, it's tiny. We still want to be as safe as possible with everything we're doing, but it's, they're tiny, tiny.
The reverse osmosis is a really, really, uh, it's a process that cleans the water to a degree that, you know, like I mean, to, to a degree that most people would, I mean, you have to add minerals back to the water. So it doesn't take minerals from your pipes. It doesn't take minerals if you drank it from your body. I mean, it's a bad thing. I'm sure Reggie can enlighten us, you know, on this whole process, but it is definitely a, um, the process that we're using is, you know, above drinking water standards.
Thank you. And I just want to, uh, comment on the Board Member Walsh's comment about the state in California, um, now allowing this process to take place, in which they've inflicted all restrictions on being allowed to re-treat your sewage water, um, or your wastewater and um, you know, it's really, I see it as the first step of the state coming down in the next few years, mandating everybody to do something like this. I mean, we've seen what has happened in the last ten years and the rules and regulations has even come down on a continuous basis. And now that they've looked at that restriction, um, the matter of time, I think state finds another way to pass a law and moving down the local jurisdictions to endorse, which is what we've all experienced with barriers.
And you remember I handed out a, a map last time we met um, with all of the different agencies all around California that are e- either in process of doing this or in the process of permitting, uh, of the facility just like this.
It's inevitable.
It's inevitable.
So let's talk about current commitments. In January twenty-three, the governing board approved a short-term financing loan in the amount of three-point-four million. With approximately one-point-one million in funds remaining from the loan proceeds as of March twelfth. Again, the agency has been awarded or recommended grants in the amount of just over seventeen-point-nine million. The agency has been reimbursed just over one-point-seven million as of March third. And we have pending reimbursements of just under five-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand. We did receive three-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand of those pending reimbursements yesterday. So we are still expecting the additional reimbursement any day now. Current open contracts total approximately eight-point-nine million, with five-point-five million remaining on those contracts as of March seventh. Full open commitments are approximately nine-point-seven million. That includes invoices change of just over four million, encumbrances remaining of just under five-point-five million, and WIPIA loan administration of two-hundred thousand.
Well, I, I had one question on this, uh, well, just clarification. So we've already paid four million dollars. Uh, and we've been, well, actually covered, remained us, it's like we've issued about nine million dollars in purchase orders. That's what I looked at the world. And so far, we've, we, we paid four million.
Out, out of that. Out of pocket already now. And, um, and we have, uh, and we have, uh, encumbrance of a another five-point-four-six, five-point-five million roughly. And then we have the, uh, WIPIA loan administration, we've been working through that process of about two-hundred grand. So right now, our total commitments are just over, yeah, nine-point-seven-six million.
These purchase orders, but then we've gone, we've used four points.
Contracts or, contracts or POs or all that kind of stuff, yes. You bet.
So we're going to go over some recent questions that we heard lately. First, why is the cost increasing? In February twenty-one, the estimate was fifty-six million. That was in June twenty-twenty-three dollars. It was a rough cost estimate before the board chose the funding plan, and it did not include any financing costs. It did include the advanced treatment that was required by the Santa Ana Regional Board, and contingency was estimated about six-point-nine million. In March of twenty-three, it was updated to seventy-one million. We have a more accurate timeline for the project. And that estimate is based on the midpoint in construction, which is an escalation method. We did add the financing costs and additional water quality monitoring requirements, but the biggest impact to this number is actually inflation from COVID-19, which we're still experiencing today. In February of twenty-four, it was updated to eighty-six-point-seven million, with the majority of that being the increased contingency required by the EPA. Again, if the WIPIA loan amount, uh, I'm sorry, if the costs come in, we can decrease that WIPIA loan amount or additional grants can do the same. And this language is in the loan terms and conditions. Next, I wanted to briefly discuss how BARWA is structured because we're a little bit different than some of the other local agencies. Uh, we are a joint powers authority or a JPA that provides wholesale wastewater treatment and disposal services for our free customers or free member agencies. That's the Big Bear City Community Services District, represented by Director Russo and Director Walsh. The City of Big Bear Lake, represented by Vice Chair Herrick and Director Segovia. And the County of San Bernardino, CSA fifty-three-B, represented by Chair Miller. We are limited by Community Services District law, which is a little bit unique than other, other agencies. There is no existing statute that binds the agency to a community or an advisory vote like it is for a Prop two-eighteen. Therefore, the board pursued Prop two-eighteen options rather than a community vote for this project, and that was decided back in twenty-one, twenty-two. We do pass on our rates to our member agencies. They conduct the Prop two-eighteen protest hearings and they put the, the amounts on the tax wall for their, uh, respective rate payers. In August of twenty-one, legal counsel presented the board with four options, all subject to Prop two-eighteen. The first one is the existing fee authority. This is our current funding mechanism. This is the, the option that the board told staff to pursue. During that discussion, they were made aware of possible amendments to agency agreements depending on their chosen funding option. BARWA pursuing a Prop two-eighteen option would be redundant since our member agencies already do that process. The board has reconfirmed its commitment to the current funding plan several times through approval of contracts, JPA amendments, grant applications, the short-term loan and subsequent budgets. The next option that they analyzed with a book of benefit assessment, that's a certified engineer's report that identifies the total cost of the improvement for the assessment. It does require a majority landowner approval that's weighted based upon the amount of the assessment for the parcel. You do have to identify a specific benefit that only applies to certain parcels and not to others. And unfortunately, proximity to the lake or enhancement of property value does not apply because those benefits must be related to wastewater treatment or disposal or different levels of those which we do not provide. It is a complicated analysis and it's difficult to identify a special benefit that would apply under this assessment. We may not be able to recover an assessment for the entire amount since it's limited to the defined benefit in the engineer's report. The next option was a Community Facilities District with a Melrose Tax. It is a majority protest hearing of registered voters, followed by a special tax election with two-thirds approval. Takes about nine to fifteen months and it can be structured with significant flexibility based on benefits or other approaches except assessed value. Again, we are a JPA and we are limited by the rules of Community Services District law, and we're limited in the ability to levy a special tax. We have to form a Community Facilities District. The board did not choose this option because of the, the negative public perception and also giving the agency the ability to foreclose on a property if the tax is not paid. The fourth option was a special parcel tax. That's a flat rate across all parcels with two-thirds voter approval. Takes again about nine to fifteen months and it will only for the debt service for the length of the loan and the remaining O and N would be through our existing fee authority. This tax must be uniform across all parcels. Undeveloped parcels will pay the same as developed parcels and your single-family residential parcel will pay the same amount as a commercial multi-unit parcel. The next question is.
So on, on the Melrose, I think what we said on the Melrose is that that puts us in a position of, we're calling on somebody to pay the bills. We didn't want to be in the business of foreclosing the property.
Correct.
I mean, it just isn't what we do.
It's not what we do.
Yeah, it's just not, Melrose, I got discouraged with Melrose. It's not, it's not a fun thing you're ever with, you know? The district with a Melrose tax, it's, uh, it's not, it's not a good thing. Uh, and then the special parcel tax, I, I want to clarify that too. Um, that's per parcel. So I think Snow Summit now sets on three parcels of land. They would be assessed for three parcels of land, and if I own personally three parcels of land in Big Bear Lake, I would be assessed the same for wastewater treatment for my three parcels of land, same as Snow Summit. A just parcel tax basically is per parcel, period. And ninety percent of Snow Summit is in the national forest, which is not a parcel. And I think Bear Mountain is the same. So all that wastewater coming out of the ski hills doesn't work on a parcel tax for this area just because the way that law is written.
You would pay the same as a hotel.
Or a hotel.
Yeah, you'd pay the, your house would pay the exact same as a hotel. And I, I'm not quite sure, I mean, the way the board took that, that wasn't a fair, trends actually.
No, we rejected that pretty clearly.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that they understand the special parcel tax. That was just not, uh, that was not in, in the works whatsoever. It was no kind of. Well, it's unfortunate, but it's not a good way for us to go. Alright, I'm sorry.
Okay. The next question is who owns the program water? And BARWA got the point in the Water Code twelve-ten, that's the exclusive right to treated wastewater. The owner of a wastewater treated plant operated for the purpose of treating waste from a sanitary sewer system shall hold the exclusive right to a treated wastewater. That leads us to the next question, which is who owns the program water once it's discharged into San Gil March? And Steve's gonna describe that for us.
Um, basically, our, our contention is that we would own that water based on seventy-seven.
Can you turn your microphone?
Sure. Uh, based on seventy-seven judgment, we would own that water because we have to own that water. Nobody else can. Um, that's my understanding of it. Uh, and, and then we would disperse that through contracts with the DWP and CS, and the SCUZ.
Reggie, do you want to address the second half of this slide? The contributions by CSD and DWP.
There we go. Yeah, sure. It's been, uh, probably two years now since we, uh, both the CSD and the DWP uh, got together. We had some conversations with the resorts to make sure they were willing to allow us to utilize the snowmaking mine that will ultimately take the water from the lake, which is a blend of about, for easy numbers, say fifty percent uh, water from here blended with eighty, eighty-five percent of the lake. It travels around, um, basically Eagle Knolls and then intake to the ski resorts are, is located over by, um, uh, the, the outlet of Rapid Creek. So, um, the CSD and DWP, uh, saw this project as an opportunity to extend our water supply. Uh, we base this, uh, breakdown of the proportion on, uh, how much we each pump from the aquifer. The aquifer has a, a. The aquifer has a current perennial annual yield of about five thousand acre feet. With this project, we're proposing to extend that another five hundred acre feet, which is approximately will extend the water supply another sixty five years, which is terrific for long term planning. Currently, and this is based on fiscal year twenty twenty two, because that's who did this analysis. CSD was pumping about thirty two percent of the water out of the aquifer and and we were pumping the balance or or sixty eight percent. So when this actually is implemented, things change over time. It may go thirty one sixty nine or it will vary and the final agreement will have language to address that on an annual basis. As because things, when the you can guarantee things will change. So and then we came up with a a cost of approximately eight hundred and sixty six dollars per acre foot. And and that's you times the number of acre feet that we're planning to percolate or do. So we're doing it two ways. We're going to try to percolate three hundred and eighty acre feet plus another twenty acre feet for future use with the Stickleback Pond. Will will water through our existing interconnections to CSD. So that's a total of four hundred acre feet, but then we've also, because of the resorts, they currently use approximately a hundred and twenty acre feet of water to irrigate the golf course. And they have a couple, two or three wells that pump from the same aquifer. And you can literally throw a rock from one of our domestic wells, which is located next to the golf course near hole number one. So is one of their pumping units. So it pumps from the same bucket. If they use product water instead of pumping from the ground, that's great for us because they're not pumping a hundred and twenty acre feet out of or out of the bucket that we use for potable water. So whereas when we percolate, there are some losses when it percolates to the ground, the trees and and there's evaporation, there's about a two to three percent loss. So if we can it's very beneficial to both the water agencies to promote the resorts to to use the water. They will pay to pump it from the lake to the golf course, which is probably more than pumping it out of the ground to bigger lift. And and then will also utilize the line. But to do that, we have to do agreements with NWD. And they have modified their agreement with Bear Valley Mutual, which is the water agency that owns most of the water in the place. So it's a very step by step process that involves multiple agencies to get the agreement in place. The current agreement with NWD and the resorts is the resorts can use the water for snowmaking, environment. And that's it. So to use it for golf course irrigation or for doing it for us for percolation, that requires an amendment to NWD's agreement with the resorts. And and once they approve that agreement, then they have to get approval from the Water Minister. It is, which is Bear Valley Mutual is a key member of that agency. So there's a multi step process. That's why the agreement's not in place because the projects we we're not going to spend all people's time to put together an agreement, which it will take a lot probably better than a year to do, but we have time before the project is operational. But there's no sense in doing that until the project's under construction. And that's a clear sign that, yeah, we're going to go ahead and it's a worthwhile thing.
Just to clarify that real quick, is it basically the water needs to be in the lake where you really could sit down and start negotiating with all these different agencies. A lot of a lot of people in the public that's why is it this part of this project.
Right.
And he just explained why it's not a part of this project because he would begin to negotiate and to get out the water and the way he can start that process.
Right.
But once it's completed, we're going to use existing infrastructure to to upgrade our aquifer, I guess, right, to some extent, and then use that water for other obligations that people are using, like the golf course. I don't know if people are aware of the fact that I don't know how many acre feet we put in the shape on. Drinking water we put in the shape on, for the donkeys to drink every year to satisfy the stickleback requirement and.
It's approximately, it's a little more than in the low twenties of twenty acre feet or something.
There are there are other, yeah, so. Yeah, is there other value like that if it's correct?
And and the interconnections that we have with CSD, we actually have three, two of which are permanent hard pipe. And those would be the primary ways to transfer the water after we pump it up. DWP wells are strategically strategically located downstream of Sand Canyon where we're going to do the percolation. We have two wells located near the golf course. They'll pump the water into our system. We have an interconnection with CSD at Division next to the convention center. And then we have one in Irwin Lake. And both of those, DWP's pressure is higher than CSD. So we don't even have to turn a pump on. We open up a valve. We have a flow meters on on both of those connections and the water just flows via gravity, if you will, into CSD system. So there's not additional pumping costs related to transferring the water from DWP to CSD. The third interconnection is up in Whispering Forest and that one is more of a as needed emergency type interconnection where we have to install, bring our portable pump and put fire hoses basically between hydrants. And that's more of a temporary, but we do have two hard pipe permanent systems and to transfer water from DWP to CSD is done without additional pump.
So we're using Sand Canyon for percolation and we're using Snow Summit and Bear Mountains. Snow making line, which comes out of the lake to to get there.
Right.
Yeah, got a guess on water would cost. Do you have to build that line from the lake up to where?
Our replacement pipeline costs, the last two or three years have been running about two million dollars a month. So and that's more than a mile to get up to the goal. So there you go. It's it's a significant savings.
Probably three, probably five miles.
Yeah, the the facilities that would be required for being worked in that topic for the percolation facilities is a booster station from the golf course up in the Sand Canyon and about a mile of height. And in through our conversations with the resorts, they're planning on replacing a section of their snow making mine, taking it out of Clubview and going through the golf course, which happens to go right past our existing well that we're planning to redo the building. So we can make the building a little bigger and and add the booster pumps that are necessary for sending the water up to Sand Canyon and it shortens the pipeline by over half a month. So that teaming up with the mountain resorts probably knocked a million dollars off of that. So it's probably a very six thousand foot, but around a million to a million and a half dollars to build the facilities to percolate in the canyon. And that would be proportionally split the same way as the price that we're paying for the water, that thirty currently thirty two percent, sixty eight percent with DWP payments.
So it's not funded by that that section is not funded by BARW, just to clarify. This is all, that's a DWP and a CSD item. So we are, we end at the lake. That's where we end and and everything from that. You know, on the other side of that is all other people, not not BARW's responsibility.
Right, replenish Big Bear is to treat the water to a high enough standard to be able to put it in the lake. And MWD's agreement is water that enters the lake via a stream or underground flow is all Bear Valley Mutual. Water that enters the lake via a pipe line from BARW is MWD's. So.
And just for consistency purposes, in the EIR, the this process is covered in the EIR. And we do cover, you know, that process, the solar process, anything that could be, you know, part of the actual program, but not exactly part of our project was covered in the EIR, EIR just for consistency purposes and to help in the future when the respective agencies went to take on that task. That was the only reason it was it was covered in there. And then just to just to point out to the to the board that the that contribution, it's about about four hundred and thirty thousand, would lower the EDU per year between seventeen and twenty dollars per EDU, just to give you an idea of the contribution from CSD and DWP through NWD would lower that down, would lower the actual cost for for EDU.
Right, because of replenish Big Bear, it gives MWD the ability to basically distribute the water that's put in the lake. And so CSD and DWP, we can't test the water in the lake right now, but with the project we can. So we're taking advantage of that. And you think of it as an insurance policy to extend water supply for the foreseeable future. So it is it's an insurance policy for water supply and.
Can I ask you a question, Reggie?
Yes.
So especially the water is going into the lake and it's transferring to the lake. And I totally understand that process. So to a certain extent, the lake becomes a little storage tank. Can you account for water going in and water going out? So you know how much is under control of MWD, right? And the water just pumped up to Sand Canyon for ground recharge, that's sort of a storage tank in and in and of itself. I would imagine as well, you're a geologist, you understand that goes, you you top it off as much as you can, that that could vary as well.
That's correct.
Okay, and then transfer as much as you can to CSD is whatever there needs to happen to be as well.
Right.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you.
I have a question. Do we have a a signed agreement with the ski resort that they'll let us use those pipes?
That's. No, we we don't have a signed agreement. That's we will get that once we know the project's going forward. And like I said, it's a multi step process that involves multiple agencies of work gets done.
But so it's a handshake right now.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'll just add to that. I've known the management at Big Bear Mountain Resorts. It management slung on for forty plus years. They get that we need this water. Totally understand it. However, it's distributed is for future groups, but being in favor of this project is a hundred percent. Like most of us, you don't understand why we're sending water, our precious water down to the circuit. And and so I would imagine that agreements would easily flow once we get past these sticking points for the current layer of that play.
Yeah, you mentioned it. It is highly unusual to export water out of a water ship. When we went to Sapa to get that original four point five million dollar grant, that they basically said, you know, relax. You know, it's just unheard of. And and we're trying to rectify that. I we have been in contact with the resorts because we don't just assume that they're going to go along with that. We in fact had a meeting with them probably recent two weeks ago and to reaffirm the plan in that they are going to relocate that pipeline, which will really reduce the cost of of the percolation facilities. And they said, absolutely, that's that's what we have in mind. We're in favor of the project and we're going to support it in any way we can.
I'm just surprised that they wouldn't have signed on by now. You know, that you wouldn't have that in writing, that they, you know. Like, I'm just surprised that they wouldn't be throwing their full support on paper behind the project.
Yeah, and and keep in mind, once again, like Dave mentioned, it's not, it's, we're taking advantage of the new water that's provided by replenish. It's a little side project that will benefit both water agencies for long term water supply. So it it's kind of its own little side project.
It's really not a BARW project at all. I mean, the water sustainable peace, you said sustainable peace is a benefit of the project, but it's really not a BARW project. We are, this is just a a treatment of our and and more expensive method of treating disposable water. That that's where we end. We don't get to water sustainability. Obviously, we're a hundred percent supportive of that whole process. But really, and for us as an agency, we end there.
Yeah.
And then second part has to be on DWP and CSD to continue working through the process.
Right, and our agreement will be with this guy, with MWD.
So so since BARW, it's not BARW's problem. So say if the ski resort didn't let us use the the pipes, then it would be a City of Big Bear Lake problem and a CSD problem.
Right, we would have to build an additional, an additional pipe.
At two million a mile. Is that what you said?
Yep.
Okay.
That's the going rate for water.
I have a question. I think Mr. Lawrence just clarified something that, but I want to make sure I understand.
Sure.
The cost of this project gets the water to Division.
That's correct.
Period.
Period.
And Mr. Ludke, I put you on the spot.
Sure.
Oh, I don't know if you have these.
I may not, but I'll do the best I can. Put on the spot. This morning at seven thirty, so.
Okay.
I'll do the best I can.
The program water, once it is discharged, is in Sand Hill. MWD.
And we will own.
You would agree with that. So the water that's projected or proposed to be pumped out of the lake up to the top, across the mountain, down into Sand Canyon, and eventually back up out of the ground and into the DWP. Pipes. Is there an agreement that says you'll do that?
We do not have a current agreement, no, to the best of my knowledge.
Do you have an agreement that says how much you're going to contribute to this plan, which could potentially, if I understand all of engineering, put somewhere in the area of two thousand to twenty two hundred acre feet of water in the lake?
I don't understand.
Are you willing to pay for that?
We have not made a commitment to do so.
No commitment to pay for it, no commitment to allow it to continue its way into the DWP system, which is where it ends because the new water won't come from Sand Canyon to the CSD. It'll be in one of these inner types. Is that correct?
The water will be delivered to you through our existing inner types.
And as I understand it, the projection is out of this end of the valley, where you're going to take the water from one side of the street, which is yours. And maybe by pumping or maybe by natural flow, it'll move across the street to the other side and enter the CSD system.
Without pumping, that's correct.
And in both cases, those two straws are coming out of the same glass. So CSD is not getting any new water. We're getting the same water we had all along.
Please, that's you're you're getting your portion of share, a hundred and sixty acre feet plus twenty acre feet for the Stickleback Pond.
And as I understood it from Mr. Lawrence, over a year ago, the Stickleback Pond was taken out of the project. It's off the table and we would not get any water for, at the very least, because it could involve sixty grand a year to test the water.
Right, there will be no that we have it, there you guys have an existing pipe that goes from the end of the street here over to the Stickleback Pond.
Which may or may not be functional.
Right, it may need some upgrades to deliver the water directly to the Stickleback Pond. But you're correct, to do that will require an estimated sixty thousand dollars a year of testing before we can put it in an endangered species pond. Of testing before we input it in an endangered species pond. So that's, in, in lieu of that, it's better to percolate an additional twenty acre feet of water. Into San Canyon, so you'd be accounting.
Right.
So it's a new water supply, twenty acre feet that's percolated. It, it's pumped out of the ground and delivered to you, so. Uh, you'll put, you put twenty acre feet here on average, or twenty-three. Uh, into the Stickleback Pond, we will deliver twenty acre feet to balance that out. So it is new water, uh, generated from the project.
Yeah, Doc, let me ask a question. Currently, are you sending a hundred and sixty acres to C S D from D W P?
No.
No. So the hundred and sixty is new water.
It's new water, we're not doing that from the lake because of your replenish.
But you're, you're not handing over, currently handing over a plan to hand over a hundred and sixty acres. No, no particular reason.
Yeah, our current interconnection agreement is, uh, just an as-needed basis. If someone, if one or the other, say, has a, a, uh, one of their major company wells go down. And, and that's happened in the past, in the last five years or so. And, uh, we transfer water to them and they pay for the pumping costs. That's what the interdiary.
Under emergency circumstances, right, we all work together, right?
But, but that's not, like you said, Rick, that's not happening currently today. A hundred and sixty acres is not being delivered to C S D, but with this project, it would be.
Yeah, it's confusing.
Right.
Just wanna make sure.
Instead of them pumping a hundred and sixty acre feet with your wells, you will be delivering it. Uh, um, through our pipelines, through, through the interconnections. So you're, you'll be pumping a hundred and sixty acre feet less per year once the project is in operation.
But currently, the C S D provides all of the water for the Stickleback. Correct?
That's correct, and, but current, that water, that twenty acre feet, if they each a third. D W P, C S D, and Barwa all entered an agreement to maintain the Stickleback Pond. We all put money into a pot, and that's what's drawn to cover your operational costs. So we all pay a third for that, uh, twenty acre feet.
Well, what I'm looking at is not the cost in dollars, but the cost out of our aquifer. D W P is not providing the water that goes in the pond.
Currently, that's correct.
Okay. Then the other issue would be, if we took Stickleback off the table over a year ago. Then at another presentation, it was mentioned that the water instead would be used to, um. Take care of reforestation up on the slope at the ski resort. And dust control for the bike park.
So, I mean, what we've been saying all along is, there, uh, currently. The ski resorts use a hundred and twenty acre feet of water to maintain. And that was an approximate number that we were given by the former G M at M W D. They use a hundred and twenty acre feet to maintain their, um, mountain bike park. So this is, i- if they, if, if, and if M W D chose to make a deal with. Uh, with the ski resorts for additional a hundred and twenty acre feet. That would be up to them to make that deal, and, and I know Mr. Lutke already indicated. That, um, that, those deals could be coming.
Yeah. Steve, do you give the water to the slopes for free?
No. Uh, I can, I can tell you how much they pay. Uh, currently, their, their, uh, contract is around four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Or up to thirteen hundred acre feet per year, no more than.
No more than.
Eleven thousand in any ten-year cycle.
So if they're using extra water for whatever reason besides making snow, that's not free water either, right?
Correct, but it's my understanding, and I, I don't know if it's a hundred percent accurate, but it's my understanding that. They're only allowed to use the water right now, they're only allowed to use the water they take right now for snowmaking. And that's it, and fire protection, correct, not all course, not bike.
So there has to be some adjustment.
There's gonna have to be some kind of new agreements, of course.
And like I, I'm, I can add to that, because I, like I said, I recently spoke with the resorts. And we were talking about multiple issues, and, and this came up, and I asked them, okay, you're. There's a, uh, permit application to augment your permit with forestry to expand your operation. Well, that required, uh, additional water to make snow. And, uh, they have made, uh, significant improvements on their efficiency of their snowmaking equipment. Uh, and this year was, you know, lately, we've had a lot of weather. But up to the last week of January, they were making snow from the middle of November. All the way to the end of January, so you would think, boy, they've been. Uh, I hear it every night, they were pumping almost around the clock. And, uh, yet, because they have, uh, fixed the, a lot of their leaks. Cause they reline their snowmaking lines, uh, uh, I've read, uh, they support them. And they have improved the efficiency, they're only between eight and nine hundred acre feet. Uh, of their eleven hundred or thirteen hundred max allotment. I don't believe they've ever hit thirteen hundreds.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I, um, uh, that's what they told me when they met, uh, two weeks ago. They don't see the need for additional water, uh, and Steve is exactly right that. They only can use it for snowmaking, yet they do augment their agreement to also be able to use it. For dust control for the mountain bike park, uh, they probably can do that within their, uh, eleven hundred. Ten-year running average allotment, so they don't see the need for additional waters. Uh, for, for their ski, mountain bike operation. But they are willing to do the irrigation with, uh, a hundred and twenty acre feet of, uh, augmented lake water. So that would be the, uh, agreement with N W D. And, and like our agreement with N W D, we pay N W D, they, it's passed through, uh, for project water. Uh, to Barwa to have, uh, uh, set, uh, uh, operation maintenance costs.
But I guess my point being, at the moment, we have no commitment legal. Other than maybe I sent you. To contribute to the production of this new water that's gonna go in the lake. And the minute it hits division, it's no longer ours, it's totally yours. We have no agreement to getting money back for that. We have no agreement to use the snowmaking line that belongs to the slopes. Nothing committed to pay for maintenance, for propping, wear and tear. Yet we're going out to borrow money on a project that even the E I R says assumes. Those facilities will be used and presumes we're going to get, uh, partners. We're going to contribute more money to the operations.
Well, I mean, can I jump, yeah, go ahead. This is the interesting process. Um, we, as a board, agreed to rates. That were then given to our member agencies for a two eighteen process, of which those rates cover everything. Um, regardless of extra grant money, regardless of contracts. But then, I don't know, I can't imagine, I mean, the biggest consumer of water has to be. Uh, our, uh, ski resorts, has to be. And it, where are they gonna get it? They gotta buy it. So, um, I think they understand that. Um, and, but the bottom line is, that you're making an assumption that they don't come in or some. And that's the wrong assumption, the assumption, the correct assumption is that, again, we've gone through the two eighteen process, C S D approved the rates. City of Big Bear Lake approved the rates, moving forward, and everything is basically covered. But so anything to be grant money, the extra contracts that come in, that's the, that's the cherry on the cake. That will reduce the costs substantially. And again, I believe that the partners that we're talking about see the value. Um, but we did have to get this, at least, to kickoff time, or we haven't even done that yet. So, um, and we're, we're stuck in this point right now, and unfortunately, this makes everybody else nervous. All the other agencies nervous, because, well, wait a second, is this thing not gonna move forward? We, we have all agreed, we've agreed to the rates. We have voted on this over and over again, C S D has voted on this over and over again. City of Big Bear Lake has voted on this over and over and over again. As far as I can tell, it's been unanimous the whole time, now we're stuck at this one sticking point, which is the agreement for the loan. And if we can just get past this point, I wholly believe we need this project built. I wholly believe it's gonna be a huge benefit to this community. And I believe that we're gonna look back years from now, if we don't do it, and look at this giant mistake that we didn't do. Or we're gonna look at something with pride that actually we got this past the finish line. And we did it at a time when it's reasonable to do it. We did it at a time we don't have extra regulations in place, we did it at a time when we might even be regulated to. To send purified water down to grow alfalfa, we're not careful how we handle this. This is like the time to move, and again, we're stuck in this one little point, and unfortunately, when that happens, when. Uh, a, we reach a point where people get insecure. Because decisions have been made all along, and suddenly the rug is, appears to be pulled out. Yes, people will question, people will wonder, are we gonna actually get this done, or are we gonna fail again? This is, since I've been here, this is our second attempt at it. And unfortunately, because of, of, at the time, toilet-to-tap conversation. Was the conversation that would not stop. And I understand it, there's an ick factor, I totally understand the reason for it, but technology has changed so much. But that stopped us last time, and at the time, the cost of doing this project was a fraction of what it is now. But ten years from now, double it, triple it, I don't know. Um, all I know is that now is the time we have to move forward, and unless we, we look at this on a logical basis, and we look at this. We're, we're visioning the future, we're trying to take their water, we can't import water, and it's foolish to ex- export our water. I, I mean, we, uh, it's just frustra- it's frustrating for me, but when, I hate to say. The questions come up, and that makes other people pause, and you're asking great questions. But it's causing part of the problem, why we can't move forward? Um, and I, I wish it wasn't so, um, but, no, I don't blame other agencies for not. We're not getting excited, or businesses in town thinking, well, wait a second, what, what's happening here? We're at that stage right now.
So, and I would just like to add that, um, can't imagine that the ski resorts at some point would not want to participate. I have no idea what depth that, uh, that inlet is for the snowmaking equipment, but, uh. You know, it's in a very shallow part of the lake, and it's the very far east end. Uh, so if you don't know, they, the water, the pipe comes out about, to San, or Stanfield, um. Uh, probably is, or down there by, behind your place, so.
We're at some degree.
At some degree, thank you. And, you know, we speed on, well, lake water for the first two months of this year, I know. And so I can't imagine the resorts, you know, at some point, they gotta recognize the fact that, uh. When we're down eighteen and a half feet, that's broadly, you know, the time when you start thinking about whether, you know, you should cover it. So I, I would can't, I just, to me, I can't imagine the resort not being a major contributor to this when it comes.
Well, I worked for the resort for almost two decades, and when the water got too short, we just added more pipe to it.
It's, it's a, it's a huge cost to go out and chase that water, and that's, that was the big issue with that, and that's what we were told by Wade. That that, if you keep chasing it at a certain point in time, it, it becomes really financially onerousome. On, on a, on bare mountain to keep, or the, the ski resorts to keep that going. Just to reiterate too, we were talking about commitment from M W D, D W P, and C S D. Just to clarify, each of these member agencies have put six hundred thousand dollars into this project already, to date. Of their own accord, they put six hundred grand each to date in this project. Not to mention, since I've been here the last seven years, all the manpower and effort to go out and testing and all these other things. All, all three of these agencies have put a lot of time and effort into this project, and money towards this project already. That to me shows commitment, we have agreements already for those, for the, for that money that they put forward. We have M O Us, and those were all adopted by our agency and their agencies already committing towards this project. It's been, so this project's been going on for at least seven years since I've been here. And every one of them have always stepped up to the plate and signed agreements to make that all happen. Hopefully, that makes you feel a little better, but that's, but we already have those, those agreements have been in place for quite a few years. As cost comes up, they, they've all stepped up to the plate, um, to make that happen.
I think I have some clarity too on the, uh, agreement thing, uh, coming to the party like, being due to disposition of. Only being, um, brought up to speed in the last couple of months, but, uh. The agreement discussion which I'm hearing is, um, a circular argument, it seems to me, in that, uh. You know, and I hear it too from the audience, that, uh, you, you shouldn't move forward with a project until you get the agreements with all parties. And the other part of it then is, you, um, you shouldn't move forward with a project, I mean, you should move forward with a project. Before you even know it, you need to get agreement with the parties. And so it's a circular argument, I'm saying, which side of the, you're sitting on to say which is the first step. They're all, it's a circle in that sense, and they're all involved in getting to the, the final conclusion, so. Uh, to me, it seems like that argument will go round and round in the circle until someone says, I've got this agreement all set. And that's the stepping stone that we begin from, and, and so far, in this, um, seven or eight years, this project has been moving forward to getting the project. Um, all the details to making the project work, before we go around to the other side of the circle to get the agreements with all parties signed up.
Mr. Lawrence, in a recent presentation, said, this is the first time a project like this has ever been attempted. Mr. Eric just reminds us that not too many years ago, there was another case called the Purple Pipe Project. Which started out at three million, reached eight million, went to eleven million, and finally was abandoned. I'm hearing also the term trust me. I appreciate and lived through the whole process of whether the alcohol line was. Either necessary or mandated. I also supported this project, as you say, each time, either C S D voted or Barwa voted. Because with the facts presented, it sounded reasonable, it even sounded reasonable. But as of December twenty-first, when the environmental impact report, preliminary environmental impact report. Was finally dropped. And I'm waiting through, again. This is the document with over nine hundred pages of text, it has charts, graphs, pictures. You start coming up with new details that I never heard presented before. And so I'm coming to a realization. That maybe I shouldn't just trust.
And, and I'll just say, there's not a, there's not a detail in that environmental, uh, that E I R report. That has not been presented to my board. And I'll say that emphatically, one hundred percent, not one detail's in there, that has not been presented to our board. And you are now getting those details in, 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 um.
Condensed form?
In condensed form, presented to you with forty-six hundred pages, I get it. It's the, the total, the total document's forty-six hundred pages, just, I, I know it is. The, the, the text itself might be nine hundred pages, but the, all the appendices that go along with this entire document is forty-six hundred pages. Just to, to clarify, there is not a detail in there, when we talk about this stickleback, it is also covered in there. And I, I covered in there specifically because we wanted to make sure that if, in, at some point in time. if things change, and sometimes they do, we have the opportunity to use project water if we ever decided to. Of course, there's a lot more agencies that we would have to go through to make that all happen. Obviously, Fish and Wildlife have a, you know, have a big concern about project water and, and would require a bunch of different studies, but I wanted to make sure it was covered in there. The pipe up to, the, the pipe up to Sand Canyon is also covered in there because of that whole thing. The alignments, a bunch of different alignments were covered in that EIR to make sure that if we ever, whatever alignment that we chose was covered under the EIR. So it is a, a pretty thorough document. I would say it's probably one of the best EIRs I've ever seen. I, I, I understand you may differ from that opinion. But far as a complete EIR, it's probably the best I've ever seen, and that's fact. And so I, I understand your reluctance. You know, I, I don't like to use the word, oh, trust me, and all those kind of things. I, we have been pushing this project forward. But we, meaning the, the agency with the board's concurrence all along to make this project move forward as directed by the, by our, our board members. I, I know you've been on the board two years now. This has been going on for seven. Rick has been on since the very beginning of this whole thing, he can remember since the beginning. This is, you talked about the fact that this was this has been, this is the second time he's gone through it, the, the, the first time he went through it was a different process that they were planning on doing. This is a completely different process. This is, when I said the first time, it never has before, as MWD been willing to, to accept this water in the past. They've never been able, never has that happened before. This is the first time, and been willing to, to, to have water pumped out of the aquifer, I mean, out of the lake to pump up to an aquifer. That's, that's never been proposed, to my knowledge, before. So if I'm mistaken, that couldn't happen. To my understanding, this is the first time a project like this, where we're pumping into the lake and, and, and some of the water will be pumped up for water sustainability, has ever been proposed into this, into this battle. And that's, I had EIRs from the previous times, and I've never seen anything like this being proposed.
Let's, let's go ahead and move on with the rest of the presentation, and our board members have an opportunity to comment later. Obviously, three items, you should hear them.
But is there anything on this slide that you haven't covered about the bear mountains?
No, I think.
Steve, you're good with that?
I'm good with that.
And this one as well?
We, we talked about the interconnection. Sorry about that, thank you. Yeah, the interconnection, it's been in, in place for, since twenty fifteen. It was a, I believe, five-year agreement with automatic one-year extensions unless either party in writing says let's stop it. It's very simple. It says, if you need water, we'll give it to you, and vice versa, and you pay for the pumping costs to, to pump it out of the ground, and we deliver it, and vice versa. Very simple agreement, and that's why it's been in place for eight, nine years.
Can you continue moving on?
Yes.
Future regulatory requirements may require treatment process upgrades, and there's a few factors that play into that decision. The twenty twenty-one Colorado Regional Board adopted the current requirements for a Lucerne Valley location that changed our permit monitoring. That's based on a twenty sixteen groundwater study that analyzed potential sources of nitrogen in groundwater other than our recycled water, and now we have quarterly monitoring required. Also, we're required to quarterly equali monitoring in the groundwater wells and the ethylate. The next piece of that is that the Mahali Water Agency is considering construction, constructing a precipitation basin with state water project water on a parcel just east of our Lucerne Valley location. So that leaves our agency's engineering and technical advisors to believe that the Colorado Board may require a higher level of treatment to send ethylate to Lucerne Valley in the future. Also, California is committed to recovering resources, and we believe that AB five seventy-four, the direct potable use legislation that was just passed, will pave the way for additional required treatment or uses for wastewater.
I'm a bit scared of that, sorry, I understand this, everybody in the audience understands, we have a permit to twenty twenty-six.
That's correct.
Be able to currently send our permit to, to Lucerne and Alfalfa fields. There is a potential that they could come back with a next permit and say, you have to do better treatment with that water because we're building these spreading facilities in the Mahali water district or whatever that is. And they, they could restrict us or ask us, or I don't know how.
But they would give us an order.
They would give us an order, and then we would be in a position of treating this water if we, to be able to send it out of our, send in one aquifer into another aquifer. They give us a permit, and they dictate what goes into that permit.
That's correct. And so, you know, this treatment process that we are currently doing, we do secondary affluent, which is an undisinfected secondary affluent. They, you know, just with the indications from what they asked us to do in the last term, term in twenty twenty-one, is a good indication of where they're headed. The equali, it's the first time they've ever asked us to test, basically, it's, they're asking us to test for fecal matter. That is a good indication for that, that the, that they will require an additional treatment process in the, in the near future for us. In addition to, there has been a lot of wells being shut down in that area because of high nitrates. I know the cement plant down there has shut down a few wells in their, in their area because of high nitrates. And there was discussion at the meeting that I had with MWA about some of the other wells in their area and whether there is high nitrates in that. We put nitrates in the area, I mean, down through our, our, our process with nitrates down in the area, and it percolates into the aquifer. There is a good likelihood at some point in time that we're going to be asked to increase our treatment facility process in the near future.
And if I may add to that, I know probably, and Greg, you can confirm, additional treatment, tertiary treatment was mentioned back in two thousand six, two thousand eight, when a version of this project was being proposed. And hey, it hasn't happened yet, but what has happened since two thousand eight is, like they just said, they're requiring additional things to be tested for, like equali, which is equal. So they're asking for that data, and in addition to that, like they mentioned on the slide, MWA, the regional water wholesaler in the high desert, is finding, they've talked to us over the last two or three years now about a percolation bond, and it's not east of the site, it's right next door to the site. And so they're going to probably promote additional treatment. With the additional testing that Barwell's required and the percolation bond, it, it's more of not if, it's more of a when, and it will be at least tertiary treatment. Tertiary treatment will cost about forty million dollars to implement. So it's not far off from what we're talking about, the sixty-some million dollar project. And we'd have to still export it out of the area, so.
And so all we're doing is it wouldn't be treating our water out of our aquifer so it can be usable in Lucerne Valley, and they don't have to do it.
And everybody.
We're going to need to build a forty million dollar plant, so there's certain benefits from our water.
Right.
And the only way we can get around that is if we build this plant, so we can put it back into the lake. That's the only two options we have, is a tertiary plant eventually, or we put it back in the lake. And if we do a tertiary plant, there's no benefits to the river.
Now, if I just talk about the options we have to move forward. Option one is a kind of basic funding, this requires a four-fifths vote. The advantages are, it would continue with the current program plan. We would honor existing contracts and agreements. The agency would hire three additional personnel as projected. The commitment to the agency's vision and strategic goal for water sustainability continues, as well as commitment to the community. With advantages, you have disadvantages. Those disadvantages are a higher interest rate and shorter term. It decreases intergenerational equity. The agency would have to enter into multiple loans, and principal and interest would be due on the full loan amount immediately. Also, loan approval is required for each loan. Debt service starts earlier and escalates to a higher, higher levels faster, and this would significantly increase the sewer users' charges. Also, the BABA waiver would not apply. It is unknown if amendments to the JPA and operating agreement will be required. We don't know the increase to the overall cost due to the loss of a BABA waiver, but it is estimated to be at least twenty-five percent. And also, we don't really affect a future borrowing capability of the agency. The agency's financial advisors, NHA, analyzed the potential financing options for RBD. Without an amendment, the agency cannot proceed with the WIPI loan, and sewer bonds are unlikely. This narrows the financing options to a private placement. The rejection of the operating agreement amendment implies that member agencies will not support debt repayment in the event Barwell's net revenues fall short. Barwell has historically borrowed money directly from banks through private placements. Those private placements did not require an amendment. Given the significant increase in the financing amount, banks may either require an amendment or limit the term to ten years and charge a risk interest rate. The current private placement market is characterized by lower bank liquidity and higher interest rates. This means that banks have less money to lend and will be careful with what type of loans they are funding. A private placement would be more difficult than the twenty twenty-three short-term financing. The potential financing finance will include two loans to fund the project over the construction period. And preliminary estimates for a ten-year loan include a conservative eight percent interest rate. The maximum annual debt service for a private placement alternative is estimated to be eleven point three million dollars, which is much higher than the five point, five point one million of the WIPI scenario. This is just a visual representation of the WIPI scenario versus the private placement. When looking at a private placement, annual rates will increase significantly higher than the WIPI law scenario. Do you have any questions on this one?
Not surprisingly, I have received phone calls and emails and verbal assault. People asking, how can we possibly justify an almost doubling on the rates for a hundred percent increase? If you back up and look from twenty twenty-three, you'll find this is not a hundred percent increase. This is a hundred and thirty-seven percent increase. We're talking about a difference of eight percent loan versus four, five percent loan. And I've got people reminding me that social security increased by two percent. I know that Samarita County employees at most can only expect a three percent, but virtually never get it. Not that long ago, the cost of living was rated at nine percent. It's dropped. But I would say, let's look at these numbers. And remember to look at more than one way.
Option two is reconsideration of the amendments, and this takes a four-fifths vote. It provides additional time for the board and its member agencies to consider specific actions needed for amendment adoption. It will keep the existing funding plan with a five-year rate schedule, the WIPI loan and sewer revenue bonds, and it's a lower overall cost to member agency rate payers per month. The BABA waiver will still apply, and existing grants will still be applicable with no interest or damages due. It will honor our existing contracts and agreements, intergenerational equity will remain. We can still hire three additional personnel as projected, and we continue our commitment to the agency vision and strategic goal for water sustainability as well as our commitment to the community. A long-term delay may jeopardize our grant agreements and the impact of the repayment of the short-term financing. If there is a long-term delay, we are note that WIPI alone application will still be applicable. If the application process would have to start over, or we would be excluded from applying at a later date. Also, we don't know how long-term, how long-term delay will impact the BABA waiver, because there is a timeframe on that. Any questions from the board? Mary?
Just for quick, I'll go back to page thirty-seven. I just wanted to clarify something for fifty-three, fifty-three B, if anybody searched any bondskin. That is not an eighteen percent increase on your total bill. You pay about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year now. Two hundred and fifty of that is, is the fee that comes out of this facility. So, and in the past several years, Samarita County has, the special district has picked up that, the percentage increase. I can't say they will do it again, technically, if you, if you print the numbers, it's not eighteen percent. If your bonds get right on you, we're getting a six percent annual increase on that number. So, I wanted to make it back to you, this is only part of the overall fee. So when you look at eighteen, and I'm sure a lot of those are fifteen, so if you look at an eighteen percent, I think it's about fifty percent, so they're like, fifty, fifty for CSD. So we're adding about, if it is fifty, but yeah, a lot of it is break, or, or, if we, if that is the case. This really only adds ninety percent to their overall, is that correct, David? Broke waste.
Yeah, they're, I mean, every, most fees, except for bondskin, bondskin is a little bit, a bit higher, not a little bit higher, a bit higher. But between the city and CSD's rates, there, this tends to be about half the, the, you know, half of their, their overall rate for sewer, this is for the treatment side and then the collection. But this twenty-two percent, eighteen percent only applies to Barwell's rate. Whatever CSD or the city chooses to raise their rate structure in that, that's clearly on their perspective.
If I could just add to that, we have different rates between CSD and the city. City's rate per year is higher and can be justified because of flow, and I understand that. The borrower rate, if you look at your tax bill, is separated out, so you have your collection side, if you're in the city, it says collection side, if you're in CSD, collection side. And you have a borrower rate. Years ago, we all agreed to separate that out because it was all mixed into one fee. And it became clear that that was a good thing to do, because that, without this plant, I mean, we're stuck, we have to have this plant. And, I mean, just as a, a side note, I mean, if we were to just try to replace this, just put it in perspective. We were to try to replace this plant that we have right now, it would estimate, estimate to replace it's about four hundred million dollars. So there's a huge amount of money that's invested into, into this plant. And I'll say currently at three hundred and two dollars, and I think that that's an average, I don't think that's a, it's probably three thirty, three forty. Somewhere in there. Yes, somewhere around there. Whenever they said it done, it adds about another two hundred and fifty dollars per year. I, I believe it, I totally understand that we want to keep everything as reasonable as possible, and I think that this agency has done a phenomenal job over the years, operated a big plant like this for the amount of money that we charged out toward. And we had just raised it to that three oh two, was a little bit less than that, in anticipation of this, again, we all agree to it, it's amazing. Over the years, every board member has agreed to it. So two hundred and fifty dollars is nothing to sneeze at, but it is over a year. And it is just a percentage of what you pay overall, but you don't have a sewer system unless you have a plant to process it. So I, I think this is the key, this is the most important part of the entire wastewater system for the entire valley, it's what was set right here. I think it's reasonable amounts, personally. And I, again, two hundred and fifty dollars a year increase over a five-year period of time to ensure that we have long-term water, I think is a reasonable amount. Figures crossed, more grant money comes in. Figures crossed, we continue to be agreements set in place because I think the agencies will all see the benefit of the water, and that number will continue to come down. That's great. We budgeted for this as we have it at this moment. And that's how we got to this point, but that's also how we got to the point of being able to apply for the loan as well, to make the whole project move forward. I'll get some other comments, but we'll see.
And, and the grants, and just to reiterate, I had said this in the past. This, the cost that we're projecting for this project at full implementation is consistent with every other agency that is doing this type of project. So, we, I can't remember, it was thirty-something, thirty-something other projects, and we looked at the, the costs that they're charging their rate payers, and it's very consistent with those costs.
If I may add, also, we're just doing the finger cross. If we get more grants, that we get other agreements like the one that we have are with CSD and DWP. But the big item is the, correct me if I'm wrong, the two hundred and fifty dollars a year is based on the twenty-two million dollar contingency, which will, you know, every plan is to beat that significantly. So, that will, it can greatly impact that two hundred and fifty dollars, that twenty-two million dollar component. So, that's something that hasn't been mentioned yet, other than on that one slide.
Why do you keep saying two hundred and fifty dollars when at the end of 2028, it's almost two hundred and ninety-five dollars?
That's the treatment component. It's two hundred and fifty. So, and I'm talking about the treatment, that's why.
Director Walsh?
Back to slide thirty-two, talking about Be American, Buy American. That's a federal program. And so, they can waive this if we use federal funds. That's rational?
It's a, it's a federal requirement. We gotta have a waiver because, through the EPA, because we, we applied and showed that our project was prior to two thousand, I think it's 2017 is the date they look back to. And that's why we ended up with the BABA waiver. Build America, Buy Away, Buy America. The, the grants are separate, separate, and we can, we can apply. Right now, the grants are saying they're going to go off of whatever the EPA, with the loan process, whatever that waiver is, they're willing to accept that. If we didn't have the, the WIPI loan, they, what they're telling us is likely it would not be acceptable. And the, you know, because they give us a grant in 2021, 2022, that would be the year, and that would, that federal requirement would be, would still be required.
So, the bold print unknown is not saying it's unknown if we lose that waiver. It's just unknown how much more it costs.
That's right.
Option three is to cancel the project altogether, and that requires a three fixed vote. There will be no amendments required, less impact to member agency rate payers, no impact to neighborhoods due to construction. We will not be hiring any additional personnel and will continue to discharge to the certain valley with no advanced treatment upgrades to our plant at this time. Grant funds may need to be paid back immediately with interest and possible damages. One of our grant agreements actually said it must be paid back immediately. Even those reimbursements suffer for those program partner MUS, the six hundred thousand dollar contribution from each of the program partners. Another disadvantage is repayment of the three point four million short-term loan. Instead, we need to pay that off. We'll still need to increase our rates to repay those items. There'll be no benefits to habitat, recreation, the economy, or water sustainability. Our ability to qualify for grants in the future may be reduced. We will not know the full financial impact by the May first budget deadline. If the scope of work is changed, all of our efforts from 2015 to present may not be transferable to another project. However, if you do choose this option, we do recommend completing the pilot study and adopting a programmatic environmental impact report because these two documents or portions of them may be transferable to a project in the future.
You know, I just want to add to that. I've worked on several projects throughout my career about this magnitude. And I think it's important everyone understands that it's trying to work through all the federal state agencies. It's not a skill, it's a part. And it requires personal contact and trust. It's just, it's really, you know, years of developing relationships with people that at least returned your phone call. Seven years. Seven years. I mean, David, you have some of those relationships back as far as seventeen years. And it, and it takes a lot to get, so honestly, I mean, when you get to a point with the projects at this point, and all of that energy, all those relationships and all the, getting through the grant people and all that kind of thing, you know, stopping it basically is that you're telling all the state federal agencies, all the grant writers, that we're not serious about this. And you're going to go to the back of the line, we're going to go to the back of the line. And it may be, well, it'll be, it won't ever happen because it, don't forget all about us, and those relationships will go away. And it just will never get to this point again, ever. I mean, this is the, this is the point, right? Where we, you know, it's, we walk away forever from this, or we're going forward.
And frankly, our agency has committed nine point seven million dollars to the project already. Turning that back and all, and basically having nothing to show for it and saying, we're gonna have to dismantle all these contracts and pay back grants and all these other things is a huge, huge undertaking for this agency. And we've been moving forward since, like I said, 2017, since I've been here. And at, at no point have I, you know, we've been in this situation where we're basically looking at, you know, dismantling a project like this.
And, and honestly, I think that if we had, were forced to do in a tertiary plant, that would probably end all of our grant abilities because I've worked with grant people before. I know how they scale them. And I mean, I mean, even though they have a checklist, they're supposed to object you. But we need to know it's not objective. And, you know, it's just a few points could knock you out of, you know, getting any additional money. And I, you know, I think it's, it's so damaging to this agency in all aspects of what we do, the permitting, the grant process, by telling, telling them that we're no longer with them.
And, and the fact of the matter is, a tertiary treatment plant doesn't have the same value as a project like this. This project has a lot of value because of the habitat, the habitat, the recreational opportunities, the water sustainability, but all those things make this project very attractive. And that's why we scored the number one project in the San Antwerp watershed. We scored number one because of all the benefits of this project can offer. And, and that's why so many, and, and because of that, that rating, that's why we have been so successful in getting grants to, to forward this project to the tune of almost eighteen million dollars, right? And nine are still in play, likely will here in May timeframe, whether we receive that additional grant. So, every dollar takes, you know, takes away at, at the WIPI loan, a federal line.
Okay, Mr. Walsh? I've been asked why I would wait until this late in the game to question. And I feel it's unfair to remember. I have asked regularly whether we had signed agreements, whether we had permits to do this stuff. And even Mr. Eric, not too long ago, flatly asked you, Dave, do you think this project will ever rebuild? Which suggests some doubt. And I think it's healthy doubt. But I don't want it to be viewed that, and one person suggested, well, you shouldn't do it now, you should wait until they go out for the loan. That only adds more work and more money. So, my drop the hammer point was reading the EIR that what I've been told at the point and what I'm now reading and what I can comfortably try to anticipate said it was time to rethink this.
We're at that public hearing part of this. We'll all continue, we'll take a break, and we go. We have two hours, people might take a break. Should we take a break? Everybody have a chance to all that? People are going to try to use their hands. All right, let's do a ten minute break. We'll see you here at four ten, foot cap please. Back in our seats.
That's the question.
Thank you.
So. And. They. You. That. That's. I. Okay.
Okay. Safety. About. The. Minute.
They bring in. And. No. They. They. Yeah. They. So. They. It's. And. Okay. I. 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 But. Yeah. Can I just be strong? Keep. Here. But.
I'm sure.
But he's.
Yeah.
I have.
Part.
You're.
Okay. That's. Oh. Now. I. Did. You. All right, we're at the. Everybody's gonna get a chance to speak. We're at a public. Party. Hearing today. Um, we have five minutes, which actually relatively long, but period of time for most public agencies. Um, time around, so at about four and a half minutes, start thinking about wrapping up the clock, you're saying, right? Please don't be, don't put me in a position of that, happy to ask you to. To move away from the podium. I don't want to be rude or disrespectful. Um, and talking about respect, I, this is a great audience today. You've been very respectful. Listening to everything that's going on. Um, you know, let's keep, keep it up. We're all neighbors. Uh, so. Please try to refrain from clapping, yelling, or interfering, or anybody says something that you might disagree with, you think is incorrect. Um, you know, just, you know, please, you know, again, we're, you know, we all love our valley. We all want to make people the best, make the best decision we can. And we're all in this together. So let's be respectful of everybody today. Um, so what, if, if, did you get us to speak? Is everybody had an opportunity to speak the card, fill it out and give it to Bridgette? Because we're gonna go down the list now for everybody that, uh, that would like to speak. And I guess we'll start with Bridgette one.
Hey, my name is Tom Sutton. My name is Tom Sutton. I live in Big Bear Lake. This proposed project and the injection of program water is not right for the Big Bear Valley. The costs for the program are not stated beyond the initial seventy-five million dollars needed to start. No mention of the increased operations, personnel, repairs, maintenance, interest, and debt service on the borrowing. All to be paid by ratepayers who have not been asked if they would want this or even agree to pay for it. The cost to actually do this will be astronomical and will not be sustainable, sustainable for our small community. There are other ways to meet our water security issues. This project is just too risky for our community, unacceptably risky for me. The decision to move forward with this injection of filtered wastewater into our groundwater will be a permanently irreversible decision in this case. I hope people hear my words today and make their voices heard in opposition to the project with me. The water that falls from the heavens and percolates through hundreds of feet of rock and soil to rest for our use in the aquifer beneath us is our only water source. This will always be the case. There will never be another water source for the Big Bear Valley. I have sent you a detailed letter clearly stating my opposition to the project. I have sent the letter to the newspaper. I will continue to reach out to Big Bear residents who care about the water relief to let families in the future. Thank you.
Yeah. Remember.
Patrice. Ducking.
Great second. Sure. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. The opinions and statements I'm making are made myself, not any organization, which I serve. Um, I just want to say that while I appreciate, uh, Councilman for Director Harris. Um, questioning as to why it, or is C S D waiting till now to bring up their concerns? Um, I think it's appropriate. Um, C S D is paying for forty-eight percent of this. Loan and is receiving very little in terms of the immediate return on the investment. Big Bear Lake and Fonskin, or the other stakeholders from J P A are continuing the entire shoreline. For the lake and they are going to receive immediate benefit. So it makes sense why. Councilman from Big Bear Lake would be pushing so hard. Um, I appreciate Director Russo and Director Walsh for stepping up at this time. Um, I would like to find out if there's a way that legal counsel could advise. I think this would help. Um, C S D, um, putting together some sort of letters of intent to say yes, and we are going to sign on board. Um, as M W D and as B B M R, because Mr. Eric, I know you've known him for forty years, but he is not the owner of his resort. It's a paramount group. And they may have a different perspective. So I would hope that Dave would sit down with C S D and talk through this with them and help quell their fears. As to why they should sign or not sign the J P A agreement. I've come to this project. I think it's very important for this valley and I would support it, but I think there are some questions that are reasonable and need to be addressed before we move on. The biggest elephant in the room now is M W T. They are the biggest recipient of this project. And they are, in no way, they're taking off money. They send, they pay one point five million dollars a year to their citrus growers because they can't release. Money. So that comes right off their books. They don't have to receive or don't have to pay that any longer. And then they also get money from the resorts. So yes, the resort is paid for the lake water, but M W D is receiving all of it and they have absolutely no stake in the payment of this six million dollar loan. So I think there needs to be some sort of lever, the ten, before. Before things move forward, before C S D will feel comfortable and before the East Valley residents will feel comfortable having C S D on their behalf. I think Mr. Jackman is hundred percent correct. We're gonna catch twenty-two. One won't sign without the other signing something. So it's gotta get figured out. We don't want to see this project canceled. That's really important for the valley. So please try to figure it out. Please try to work together, not force anybody through intimidation, fear tactics. Um, threats to cancel the project. Y'all are very comparable. So please try to work together and help C S D get on board with signing over there. Thank you.
Gary Keller?
Still working? Yeah. So. Thank you. My name is Gary Keller. I'm a citizen of Big Bear City. My.
No.
I do have some concerns about this project. And as a C S D customer or water user, um, it's the cost benefit to C S D users because the cost is really high. And I believe the benefit is imbalanced for. Customers to C S D. Ski areas in benefit nature. In terms of the lake. Um, our project. I have a concern about the water recharge. Because we're in such a small basin, I understand that. You know, the, uh, treatment levels are a lot better than they used to be, but so are the regulations for cars and the gyms. And I'm not sure if we're gonna get them all out if we're putting treated wastewater in such a small bucket. As compared to downhill. You have a really big bucket and you have a lot of. Um, the other thing is, I read a recent article about Snipelback. They've been transported, removed from the pond out here. By fishing wildlife to Bluff Lake. And I don't know if it's true or not, you know, you read an article, could be fake news, right? But. It's because of the burrows and the contamination to the pond. So if that's the case. Why are we putting water in there? And again, it's the cost benefit ratio likely is just imbalanced for the interests of users. And I know it's a dilemma. The whole, the whole issue of keeping the water up here is a tough decision. I don't want the right answer for this, but I just. Want the. Ones that benefit the most. Any of those. Few ones that benefit little. But they will rest. And. Eric.
Elaine Utes?
Hi. I'm Elaine Utes and I'm the president of the board. Of Big Bear Association of Realtors. And I'm here to show our continued support for the replenished Big Bear project. This project is critical for the stability and livelihood of our valley here in Big Bear. We need this program to remain in place, sustain the groundwater for our drinking wells, the quality of our beautiful lake, the sanctuary of our birds and wildlife, among others. The amount of time and money on this project is something to consider. As property owners, we don't want our taxes to go up. But if this project continues, the cost for us will be far less substantial than if we stop this project. As you mentioned, the W I I A loan is a set price and much lower than the price of loans. And we will be, you know, and will we be able to get this loan at a later date? And I do not want our home values to decrease. If we cannot keep our wa- our water. Up here in Big Bear and keep our lake water up, our property values will go down. If we stop this project now, in the future. Will this project be mandated by the state to put into new equipment? What will that cost be? I'm guessing a whole lot more. What will our taxes be at that time? And what about the grants that we have received? Will we be able to get other grants to move forward at a later date? The project now is not cost effective. It's not, it's not a matter of fact, it's not a matter of how much extra taxes we will pay, but it's how much we will pay. So as Realtors, we see the need and cost effectiveness effectiveness to continue with this project as planned and not waste the money of our community. So we implore. B F R one, D W P, C S D, Fonskin City of Big Bear Lake. To vote to pass this project and get it done. So Big Bear can continue to grow and thrive with our own water sources.
Steve Folds?
Anybody? Well. My name is Steve Folds. I think most of you know me. Um, I came here with two pages of things I wanted to say, and now I'm not gonna say any of them. This is the critical project with a long-term survival of the district. And I think most of that vow, and I think most people understand that water is critical for this valley. The lake is critical of the valley, the D W P and our domestic water system, and they are all tied together. And we all understand that. But what I didn't understand until today is the. Lack of agreement with some of the parties, namely the ski areas in terms of using their pipeline. To get the benefits from what water was doing, we have to have these other facilities, right? I mean, the D W P and the C S D have to do their job. And that's not part of your job, but it's necessary. And so I kind of understand what, what Mr. Walsh is saying, that, hey. Why don't we have agreements? And I also agree with what Patrice indicated. That there's various level of commitments, a various level of written agreement. I mean, to have the attorney spend months and months. Dotting every i and crossing every t and getting every single pen down probably doesn't make sense at this point. But having a, a letter of agreement or a letter of intent or an M O U or something in writing from the ski areas. That they're willing to participate and, and the pipeline is available for ranch or whatever. And the M W D has got to get on board. They are the primary beneficiaries of this and they need it, okay? The inland water program that was created in seventy-seven was, we estimated at that point. What, what would the lake look like under the inland program? And it would never go below fifteen feet. And based on historical hydrology. And that worked and it worked through two thousand and four. And that was the first time that it went below fifteen feet and it didn't do it again until two thousand and sixteen. But since two thousand and sixteen, it's been down more than fifteen feet. Five of the, of those eight years. Okay, the hydrology has changed. None of our models back in seventy-seven predicted that. So something has changed. We need an additional source of water to keep the lake up. And I suppose there's probably a lot of people in the room that goes, well, what's magic about fifteen feet? Okay, I spent ten years at the M W D. Fifteen feet is kind of a magic number. When you're above that, most of the lake is open. And it really doesn't matter if you're at five feet down or ten feet down, certainly not eight feet down. Okay, the recreational benefits in the lake are about the same. When you drop below fifteen feet, that changes. Okay, every foot below, the east launch ramp shuts down, the west launch ramp shuts down, the marinas start shutting down. The, the recreational value of the lake drops significantly when you go below fifteen. So there's a major benefit for the W D. They need to be on board. And I know there's a problem that they're funded primarily by property taxes. And they don't set the rate. Okay, but they do get increases in a such value on a regular basis. And. I believe there is money in their budget. Okay, that's, Mr. Ludik, it's not, not that I'm really maybe, but I looked at their budget online last night. And their predictions for their property tax revenue were like four point two million. They actually took in five point one in twenty twenty-three.
It can also decrease.
Well.
It can also decrease.
It decreases a little. It can, but it's rare. My property taxes go up two percent every year. And. Um, and so it can't go down, but they budgeted again for two point four, four point two, I'm sorry, four point two for twenty-four. Um, it just seems like they, you know, if you bring in nine hundred thousand dollars extra, there may be a little money at least to support this project. And I understand they're constrained. But. They need to be committed. The ski areas need to be committed. And it makes sense to me that we could sign, we could negotiate some sort of letter of intent. M O U, something short of a full agreement with the, with the key parties that are involved. Before we jump into. Something. Already. Right?
Bobby Martinez?
I.
She. Yeah. You're smart.
Bobby Martinez. I live here in Big Bear. Big Bear City. And I have a small business in Big Bear Lake. And I can tell you both from my perspective, that as a homeowner on this side of town and a business owner on that side of town. And a lot of the comments that I get from tourists and from locals, I get a lot of locals. Is they're struggling. They're, uh, the restaurants are struggling. They can't hire the people they need because cost of employment has gone so high. People can't go to the restaurants as great as they did because the meals here two or three times more than what they were. So the cost of living is escalating exponentially on all levels, utilities, taxes. So the elephant in the room for all of us is taxes. We don't want any more taxes placed on us. Many people are on fixed incomes and just a little percentage, you know, you look at it and say, well, it's meat on this one. Not a big deal, but it can be when you're struggling, paycheck to paycheck. And you're trying to put food on your table and you can't afford the amount that you used to get. Because now your little basket you bought at the park in the spring is a hundred dollars opposed to fifty. You can't get the things that you needed to get anymore. So. It's just, to me, this whole project replenished Big Bear sounds wonderful, very bright.
Thank you.
But this season, I believe. And it's not your fault. It's not anybody's fault. But that's a higher level government. The season that we're in, it's just unconscionable. So. All of us is saying, we don't want any more taxes. If we can control this little bit. You know, the, the, the project that you talked about. Uh, we knew very little about what it would be going to cost. And right now, you're in a position, you really don't know what it's going to cost. And so. That's the only reason I would be against any tax. Bottom line, no more. Thank you.
Margaret?
Good afternoon. My name is Margaret Teepenbauer. I live in Big Bear City. I run a mental health stress reduction program for an unpopulated agency for seniors sixty years old and up. There is a very large population of seniors throughout the valley. Very large population here in East End. They are all on limited income. I work with a tremendous amount of people who at best are trying to make it on fifteen hundred or less a month. This isn't funny. You're all sitting there, no clue who is going to actually be committed to anything much of anything, but we're supposed to foot the bill. The unaffordable housing, inflation brought about that by the lunatics running the asylum right now. And for the last several years, the so-called governing bodies from every level, federal, state, county, and local, absolutely apparently intent on forcing policies on the people, and we don't get a voice. You were warned years ago that you really need to go ahead and bring the project to the ballot. You failed to do that. Instead, you are pushing forward, as you say. While that's not helpful for the rest of us and certainly not for my people. So instead of taking it to the ballot, you chose to impose fees. You're not entirely sure whether you're going to have the money. And we're being told, well, by golly gosh, if we cancel it, it's going to cost us having to repay this stuff in the next election, don't ask us, should you? The M W D not committed, gets all water or benefit. What do we get? East End, what do we get? Not a whole heck of a lot. So you created a mess. Now we're looking at everyone kind of sort of, well, gosh, if we cancel it, this is going to happen. We've been that, that's going to happen. You should have thought about it back when you were born. It should have gone to the ballot. We should have had a voice and not suddenly be sitting here hearing you all complain. And yeah, you know, if you're on an unlimited income, your projections are probably great. If you're on a limited income, they aren't. You talk about your projections being consistent with other agencies doing similar projects, that's lovely. We have to pay for this. So consistency, when the money is not there for the residents, means not a gosh darn thing. They are trying to make it through between raise utilities, you want to raise even more. The limited income folks have no explanation of their income going up commensurate with what you're asking from them. Trying to keep theirs, above their department, is all about all that they can do. So I really think you do need to sit back and rethink what you're trying to impose, especially when you don't have commitments from major ha-ha stakeholders. Thank you.
Amy Kennedy, Big Bear Lake. I really hope that you can all come to a decision that, well, keeping this project forward, I think is really important, not just for me, but I'm thinking about my kids and my grandkids. It's really easy to kind of get cold feet when we've had two wet winters in a row. But we know that that's not going to always be that way. And I really, you know, when you talk about what's going down to the water to the surf. By the way, I purchased more alfalfa than my husband knows. I understand that that's going to cost me as well. But I, I really, I really hope that you can find a way forward and to salvage this. And I think it's going to be a legacy project for this, this board. And I do feel for the people that that might have an impact. You know, maybe you can even look at having some type of waiver or some type of program to help people that might, that really be a hardship for, but all in all, I really support this project. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak? Please come forward. It's gonna be nice. I guess we don't need leave cards. No need for a speaking card. We have it great.
Hi, Bob Law should look. First of all, I want to say I am behind this project. When I first heard about it and started following it, following it on in twenty twenty-one, it really felt like it would give you a benefit for the East End besides water going to the lake and all those things. And then I'm just realizing that I'm hearing, you know, that not so much water is going to stay in the East End. And I started to think, well, why are we funding this state if it's not going to be beneficial to us? You know, I will say that if we can get this thing, some of these differences ironed out, I'm very much opposed to the fact that by this time right now, M W D is not committed. They're the major players here, okay? And that's one thing that you guys, Larry, I want to thank you very much for saying the things you said because that's what we were thinking already. You can't take a handshake, you can't take a, okay, I will take care of it. You gotta have it in black and white, one way or another, to cover everything. You know, this is about water shortage, I assume, because sometimes we very, you know, how the water is going to be, whether we're going to break it, weather, whatever, and a break goes down, which is a bummer because I like to make my pontoon out there, watch for. The fact is, it's about water and availability since we don't get pipes, you know, water pipe up here. But it's, it's what comes from other areas. And yeah, a different subject, but it's, you know, the D W P, C F B, they all attended water restriction, water on this day only, water on that day only. For good reason, but yeah. And I'm probably going to get some enemies here, but here we go, you know, opening with a water shortage, not knowing, we go open up a hundred thirty-two room hotel with a hundred thirty-two toilets flushing and showers going and sinks running and, and washing machines doing all the limits. That, but that's going to be a lot of water, okay? And please, Reggie, don't, don't like he didn't be raising any for that, okay? He'd be keeping that. But the fact is, I really do understand that we have to get this done. You guys are smart people up there or else you wouldn't be there. Let's work it out, work the details out, get all these guys that are, that have the benefits of this water, let's work it out. We have to have, you know, everything in place, black and white. That's, that's the bottom line. Can't just have any, you know, handshakes or agreements verbally. This has to be in black and white. Hey, some of you people might not be around here next year. Who knows, you know, life is short and you never know. So I mean, you got different ideologies about, you know, what you want to do. So get it in black and white, cover everything, and let's go forward. This is a good project. I really believe that. And I'm with the lady, you know, hey, I'm a big sand come too. Everybody, I'm a big, most people I hear, and we're all old, you know, against social security. You know, we can't just say, well, that, the negative twenty dollars a month for this, this project, that hurts a little, but you know what? There's things that, that need to be done and sacrificed for the better good. If we can get on everything detailed now, I really believe this would be a good project. I'm tired of rambling, but you know, please give this a more dealt. And once again, I want to thank all you folks up there and guys that put the time and effort into all this. I know it doesn't come easily. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Christina Mills. I'm from Big Rose Lee. I try and email questions to city leaders and ask them direct, when it questions, and I don't get responses back. So I'm going to go new style and ask some questions. I know they won't be able to answer them specifically here, but maybe you can take notes and email me later. The, I believe it was Mr. Lance who was talking about Sand Canyon, and we have to build structures to how, whatever it was there, at one to one point five million per population, I call it. Sixty thousand dollars a year C S D pays for the Stippled Gack ponds and two million dollars a mile for pipeline that is about seven miles, I believe, I read. But somewhere in the ballpark of fifteen point five extra million dollars, is that correct? That C S D is going to have to pay in addition to that. Again, the East End people are the ones who are stuck with that bill. Hopefully, everybody will take a pause and find out if you benefit directly from the water. Vice Chair Herrick, been right on the lake, next to Rappford, Rappford Creek, I believe you said. Why are you even voting on this at all? This affects your property value directly and everybody who has a property on the lake. I believe that there should be some sort of extension from that, but I'm not an expert, so I'll leave that up to you.
We'll ask the attorney regarding that, but I don't think so.
Okay. Well, good. If the attorney says it's good to go, then wonderful. Plain and simple, this is a government who inaugurated, I've never seen. There is absolutely no value to this. This is not the right project. The nitrates that are coming from somewhere up here, I don't know if anybody's bothered to ask the eagles where the nitrates come from, but nitrates are used in snowmaking. I've asked, tried to ask them several times what they use for snowmaking, and I don't get a response from that. So I have to kind of rely on some other research I've done. And then again, I wanted to double check too. Are you serious when you said that you were upset and hurting the grant writers' feelings that we back out of this? Was, was that, did I hear that correctly? That that was going to be a problem and that we would end up inevitably making people in the state upset? Did I hear that correctly? Some people, I think some people agree with me in that fact. When do we start caring about our residents less than we care about the grant writers? This is absolutely a scare tactic. I've heard it, do it now, it's going to be required later, it'll be more expensive. We have to have this plant done, it's a huge amount invested. We don't have a sewer, so unless we have a plant to treat it, and all of our water is going to the surf. Well, all of that water that goes to the surf will be stopped by any one of you or a number of you on this board. That doesn't have to be there. You make the decisions for the community. If you don't want the water to go to the surf, I guarantee that there's somebody in this room that can sign a piece of paper and have that stopped. I feel bad for people who aren't here to speak about their objections to this. I understand that water is a precious resource in California. This is absolutely the wrong project. People working on it since two thousand and eighteen, this is the second time. Mr. Herrick, you've said you've gone through this. I think it's time to take a hit and start asking the people what they want instead of making decisions for them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carol Liu, and I wanted to make some comments based on what I've heard today and what I've heard over the last few days. Number one, I've gone through your slides. And it looks like the citizens who pay C S D will be looking at a twenty-five dollar rate increase this year, twenty-nine next year, thirty-five the following year, forty-one the following year, forty-eight eighty-five the fifth year. So it's eighteen percent over year is how you are working it out. And if we were to go private placement, suddenly we're looking at forty-five thousand or forty-five percent, thirty-seven percent, et cetera. That, I don't know enough about it, and it just feels a little bit like budget fear porn. I'm looking at what you've currently spent so far. And I heard after the C S D meeting, I thought we were on the hook if we had spent twelve million. Has that, is that the case? Or have we actually spent three million four hundred and seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three? Exactly what I added it up to be on that current contact, contrast gauge. With two hundred and eighty-one, two million eight hundred and ten thousand one hundred and ninety-one going to Water Systems Consulting Inc., that's the biggest bill. So we have nothing to show for that two million other than advice. Am I jumping to the wrong conclusion there? So one of the things that strikes me is, according to what I believe I heard, the skiers' work has a contract for thirteen hundred acre feet of water for four hundred thousand dollars. So one acre foot of water is three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-one gallons, according to Google. That comes to point zero 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 nine four two one four eight four a gallon. I'd really like to be able to get my water for that. So we're talking about investing quite a lot of money to make water that goes into the lake possible to put into the lake. And that seems like there's a disparity there just in the ski resorts, and especially given the way the ski resorts have been operating and how much money they've been making and so forth and so on. I am all for get all the stakeholders who benefit the most to agree on what they're going to contribute or some variation of what they're going to contribute before you stick the residents who pay C S D some sort of a commitment that we are completely stuck with. And by the way, my understanding is the two million gallons of water a day that are treated and sent off the hill that would ultimately be re-treated and put in Stanfield cutoff should account for about a four-foot rise in lake level. That's my belief. If I'm wrong about that, please correct me. But a four-foot rise in lake level is not filling the lake when we have super low capacity, et cetera, et cetera. So I am all for keeping water up here. I hesitate to ask why we are shipping water to the surf valley when we are treating it to an agricultural use level. We can't find a place we could use it agriculturally here and possibly ultimately replenish our potlivers. That's probably a conversation for another day, but those are, those are the things that concern me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Beveridge. I've been in Big Bear for about thirty-five years, and I've seen a lot of ups and downs, a lot of stuff going on. City of Big Bear Lake, Valley in general. Anyway, what I've heard today is that it's likely to cost us forty to fifty million dollars to keep sending the barbed water to the surf with zero benefit. To me, that's the elephant in the room. We're going to have to pay that in a matter of weeks. What do we do with the wastewater from our sewage treatment plant? We can't quit going to the bathroom, and that's got to be dealt with. It's, right now, it's being dealt with, going down with the surf. They're not going to want it unless we spend a bunch of money in the, in the not-so-distant future to treat it at maybe a positive two-thirds of what this project is going to cost, where we get a number of benefits. Now, as far as, I would say that many, there are many Big Bear City residents that rely on the lake and other Big Bear Lake activities for their employment in Big Bear. If we didn't have the lake or the lake was consistently down, the percentages and the times that it's been down over the past, what is it, five, ten years? I've been in here a long time. I've been in the visitor business. Um, I've been in here a long time. I've been in the visitor business and people come up and they call and they say, you know, is the lake drying up? You know, we're not coming up if the lake's not there. Uh, that's a pretty important revenue source, whether it's for lake activities directly or whether it's for the water that gets pumped up for skiing. Whether you like it or not, we are a visitor town. Uh, we're not a retirement town. We don't have enough oxygen for most people. We don't have the hospital for it. We're a visitor town. We have been for over a hundred years. That's not gonna change unless our lake goes away. Um, and then jobs are gonna go away. Everybody's gonna go away. Some people might like that, uh, but I don't think the majority are gonna happen with it. Um, the other thing that I would like to point out is that over the years, there have been many passed up projects that, uh, that are costing us more today than if we had paid the money to do those projects years ago when they were presented before us and we chose not to do them. That's, that's a huge consideration. Um, though I heard, and I don't know if this is true, Steve can probably confirm this, but that there was an opportunity to buy water in the lake instead of paying for water in Lubbock for a million and a half a year for how many years? I think that we would have been better off if we hopped up that. Another thing that I've heard over the years is when we widened Big Bear Boulevard, we had the opportunity to put all the electrical underground at that time, far less cost than what it costs us recently. So those are things to consider. Whatever we spend today is gonna cost us way more. The money that the house has to get spent, we sure know we'll have to get spent. Thanks.
Hello, I'm John Jackson, the head director for Visit Big Bear. We have the tours of the town, see what we're trying to attract people to come here. Our lake is, is our number one attraction. People coming here, we have a new event coming up this year called Lake Fest, Memorial Day. Pinging around lake activities, paddleboard competitions, uh, like swimming competitions, things that used to be more common because of inconsistent water. We can't, you know, when the lake's down eighteen feet and algae blooms are happening, you're not gonna have a swimming contest. So on our behalf, we fully endorse the project, we'll leave the details, the letters of the county, parties can be worked out.
They have all these too.
Well, we have a few letters to read for people that have sent in to the major meetings today.
Tarrell Woods says, I live in West Spring Forest and I also own a docket pine knot. I believe that the replenished Big Bear program is one of the single most important things we can do for our community. The lake not only makes our town as beautiful as it is, it's also the lifeblood for our economy. Keeping our water and repurposing it to the lake is of vital importance for all of our community's health, well-being and ability to provide for our families. Please do not let this program die. It's the most important thing we can do for all of us that have chosen Big Bear to raise our families on it. Okay, sorry. Danielle Goldsmith says, I am sending my support in continuing the work on the replenished Big Bear program. I'm a board member of Visit Big Bear, a past board member of the Chamber of Commerce in Big Bear Lake Economic Development Committee and a business owner in Big Bear for over thirty-five years. I am also a lifelong resident and fourth generational Big Bear family and I understand the cost of this project, but feel continuing to do nothing or not finding a suitable solution to keeping all the water we can in the valley is not the answer. I am in support of continuing this work. Kaylee Saterup says, uh, I'm asking to continue with the project for our future. Dee Rayhill says, this needs to move forward for our future in Big Bear Valley. Daryl and Carol Mulvinhale, we are writing you in total support of replenished Big Bear. Let's not be penalized and bound judge as we were in the eighties when we did not buy the water in the lake. In the eighties, we could have purchased that water for a million and today it'll probably be one hundred million. We would be happy to pay the two hundred and fifty dollars per parcel in today's dollars rather than in another twenty years, we would leave it to our children to pay thousands a year. We see replenished Big Bear also escalating our property value as one that's completed. A win-win for valley residents. Will Ray, Will Rayholder, I'm a registered voter in Big Bear Lake and I'm strongly for the replenished Big Bear program. Please do not allow it to be stopped or voted down. There will be a time when water in California is worth its weight in gold and it is short-sighted for us not to keep our natural water that Mother Nature provides here in the valley for the support of life and also the recreation upon which our entire economy depends. Is it costly? Yes, but consider it a necessary investment in our valley's future with a high ROI. Replenish Big Bear will keep our economy strong and add to our property values more than it costs property owners. Indy Radio writes, I'm an ancient world new voter, current and future community member and lifelong resident of Big Bear Lake. I vote yes to replenish Big Bear. I urge you to have the future, my future, in mind as you consider that the cost of water is only going to go up from here. Let's come together as a community to avoid situations like the fight over the Colorado River. Invest in Big Bear's future, love Big Bear, protect Big Bear, replenish Big Bear. Melissa Evans Gray writes, I'm a registered voter in Big Bear Lake and I'm strongly for the replenished Big Bear program. Please do not allow it to be stopped or voted down. There will be a time when the water in California is worth its weight in gold and it's short-sighted for us not to keep our natural water that Mother Nature provides here in the valley for the support of life and also the recreation upon which our entire economy depends. Is it costly? Yes, but consider it a necessary investment in our valley's future with a high ROI. Replenish Big Bear will keep our economy strong and add to our property values more than it costs property owners. Linda Goldsmith writes, I have been a resident of Big Bear Valley for over fifty-six years. I have watched the water needs grow and grow. We need to look to the future and make sure there is always enough supply to our new and growing population. Let's do the right thing now instead of revisiting the situation in ten at an even greater cost. I am in full support of replenished Big Bear. Sunny Hallenbaum writes, I am emailing in support of replenished Big Bear. Taking away the support of this won't be good for our town in the long run. Keeping our water in the valley is essential for the future of our economy, recreation and underground aquifers. Let's make sure to keep our town thriving. I appreciate your consideration. Do you want me to write you these long letters from the fire association and Senator Chalobos?
Yeah, do they, must they be written on the record or they just send this?
Uh, both. They did ask for, we're writing to the record, so I'm just thinking, okay.
Better than me.
Dear the board members, I hope this email finds you well. At least I may become aware of potential obstacles hindering the progress of our much needed project. As a member of the Big Bear Firefighters Association, I deeply invested in its success and would like to understand the reasons behind any delays or challenges. Here are my key points. Cost estimation. The foundation for this project has already been laid, but I am concerned about the rising costs. If we had initiated this project years ago, it might have cost us ten million dollars. However, the current estimate stands at a staggering sixty million dollars. Considering inflation and other factors, what will this figure be in another five years? We cannot afford to postpone this any longer, especially given that the lake is the lifeblood, blood of our community. Sustainable planning. While we've enjoyed a full lake in recent years, we must not assume that this abundance will persist indefinitely. Environmental conditions can change and we need to plan for the long term. What if California mandates completion of this project in the near, near future, waiting to result in significantly higher costs for our community? Board member shift. I am puzzled by the sudden shift in board member rankings. Previously, they seemed supportive of the project, now, yet now there appears to be resistance. Could external influences be at play? I urge transparency and open communication within our association to address any concerns. Community impact. Our community relies on this project. It's not just about infrastructure, it's about safeguarding our way of life. Let's maintain our momentum and ensure that Big Bear Lake remains resilient and sustainable. I kindly request a meeting to discuss these matters further, but let's work together to overcome any obstacles and keep our project on track. Thank you for your attention and I look forward to hearing from you soon. John Bidwell. And Senator Ocho Bo writes, I'm writing this letter in support of replenished Big Bear. Replenish Big Bear captures and purifies our lost water and uses it to enhance water levels throughout the valley. This new supplemental water source will help restore lake levels, which have seen extremely low levels over the past fifteen years and were only forty percent full as recently as November twenty eighteen. The water also will be used to recharge groundwater levels in the valley, which will protect our community's drinking water supply. Implementing a plan for water sustainability is of vital importance to the community. Replenish Big Bear will improve public safety with a reliable water supply, support economic stability and foster environmental stewardship. I strongly urge the Barwell-Gomery Board and its member agencies to continue with the replenished Big Bear effort. I am proud to support the efforts of replenished Big Bear.
All right, let's move on to the, the agenda items. Uh, we have three items to discuss and I'll go ahead and read off, probably option one. Um, and what I'd like to do is, you know, we don't have those proposed on the silverback, but all other board coordinators and heads of major companies, they wish to do that. Option number one, private placement. Minimum twenty-five percent increase in overall construction cost due to loss of the, you know, Buy America waiver. Cost of cancellation of the WIFTI loan, approximately two hundred thousand. So giving an increase in the rates during recharge recovery, increase in debt service. John, do you have any comments on this item?
No.
So good.
No. No.
Larry?
Uh, I'll say, yeah, I'm gonna start. Move the whole prospect and just wait until, uh, uh, to show them the turn of time to pay back and I don't think they're doing anything for that. And I'm not gonna be able to. That would make sense. Um, is this a roll call vote or is this just a direction, again, a direction to staff at this point?
We're just in progression.
Okay, we need, so there's no need for a vote or is there, is there a potential order need for a vote?
Not, not on each of the items. It would be just on, if you wanted to leave one of those recommend, staff recommendation, it will give different direction, then, then we would like, uh, a vote on that direction.
All right, so it sounds like this consensus of the board, the option was not on the table. Um, option two reconsider, reconsideration of amendments. The short-term delay should have no additional financial impact. A long-term delay could result in the following. Loss of awarded grants requiring agents to pick out a larger loan. Short-term financing, regardless of the expected to be satisfied by the WIFTI loan must be completed until twenty twenty-six. Delay of closing the WIFTI loan past payday, pay-up date would result in agency being required to find a different funding source to pay back the three point four million short-term loan amount. Bottom line on this is loss of the Buy America waiver, uh, which would, which will potentially cause your cost by approximately a point five percent. John, do you have any comments? Would you like to comment on this item?
No.
So.
Um, I'm struggling with how we got here. Um, I saw in my second meeting, but I've done a lot of reading, but, um, have been aware of replenished Big Bear. It's a great forward-thinking project. Um, last year, when it came before council for us to raise people's property taxes, I was the only person that voted no. Um, so I, I've had concerns all along with, uh, forcing our community to pay for this. Um, I feel like at some point along the way, something this big should have had a, a advisory or a ballot vote that people could have voiced their opinion.
Still.
So that's, that's where I am at. I, I would like that there to be an advisory vote um, where people can make their voices heard and maybe if we had in, involved the community earlier on, we would have more community support now. Cause my sense is, is that the community, again, just like Measure I, is divided. That's it for me.
All right.
When you mentioned Measure I, yes, I've had feedback. When I asked why this didn't go to a public vote, one comment was, well, remember what happened with Measure I. Another was, well, if we did that, it wouldn't have happened. Now, those are just two people. Maybe they're blowing smoke. But I too feel that this should have gone to a vote. I walked with the firefighters to measure I and some of the people came to the door with smoke coming out of their ears. They were violently opposed to it. Others said yes, we got both opinions, but ultimately the consultant that the fire authority hired to put the measure through came before the board and said she didn't think it would pass and that we'd get fifty-seven percent. As it happened, we did get fifty-seven percent, but it was fifty percent, seven percent, no. So I think there's a strong feeling in the valley that they've been taxed to the max and they just can't handle it, no.
Eric. Well, I, my position is better, I think it's, uh, now I'm hearing the majority of people believe in the program. There, there are some issues and I understand the issues. Um, and I understand where the CSD is coming from, uh, in the fact that they had some questions. Um, I just wish we hadn't gotten this far, spent the amount of money we spent. Did the studies that we've done. And I, so I'm wholly against canceling the program. I wanna make that very clear. Um, but maybe there's something we can do better with it. Uh, you know, agreements? Uh, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll get agreements in our game. Uh, and I'm optimistic that, um, we will not cancel this today, hopefully. Because we'll be just left with some bills that we're gonna have to deal with one way or another. Uh, we have to cover our commitments. And there's probably not enough cash to be able to do that with this agency, so the member agencies will probably have to come forward with that. But if we just take a pause, if we take a pause with this, um, and I understand equity, I, I don't know how to delve further into equity, but I get, I get the equity portion of it. Um, and at the same time, maybe look for more grant money, look for something else. I don't know how long we can pause before it comes unraveled, um, but, um, um, I'm just, if we as a board just don't kill it at this moment, gives us an opportunity, try to do a project, I think that everybody for the most part wants, there are a few who don't, but for the most part, we want this project to go through. And get more people on board, figure out the equity portion of it. Um, I'm, I'm, I have a feeling that even if it is an advisory vote, I think it would pass if it's an advisory vote. I've worked on Measure Y and Measure Y Y previously. Uh, those passed and it was an advisory vote that passed on it, which raised the TOT, uh, in the city. Um, again, because I think this is an important project. But the only concern I have with doing that is, is slowing it down to the point that, uh, we might lose the grants or we might lose the, I'll call it momentum, uh, we might have studies that go stale. Um, so I think we have to be very careful moving forward that, but I, I wouldn't mind at least looking at it and trying to understand if we do an advisory vote, what happens to the project? Um, will that kill it anyways? So we're moving forward. The equity question, I don't know the answer to that, but I think it's worth absolutely looking at. And, uh, and the agreements portion of it as well. Um, anyways, that's where I stand. I just would like to see us not have this end at this moment.
Yeah, I just have a few comments. Um, I mean, obviously we're all on this room today because we love looking at Big Bear Lake and we love to follow the lives that it provides. And the lake is, you know, probably our greatest asset because it does, you know, it does drive our economy. I, I guess what concerns me is that, you know, and we, and, and, you know, I've listened to everybody and we've had a lot of people concerned about the cost and I understand that I'm on fixed income. For me, maybe a couple trips to Starbucks a month, other people that get paid or go through the electric bill, it's it's hard to, it's hard to talk to people about that when they just simply can't afford it. But I think I agree with Rick. I think a lot of people want this project and I think this consensus is, we have to figure out a way to do this. I guess what concerns me and I, and I think Steve kinda hit on it a little bit and, and we've done, Dave and, and Richard have done a great job of promoting this project and what great, how great it is and what it's going to do and how the system works and other jurisdictions or do of this, I made comments about how inevitably we're gonna have to do this, but you know, but the one thing that we just, we never went really after really strong because of negative connotations is that the lake is drying up. I mean, it is drying up. We have to face the reality that the lake is drying up. So unfortunate. I mean, and I, and I pulled all this off the MWD website, so I, I believe it, I'm not, math is not my thing and follows, so don't. Um, I made a mistake. I made a mistake because I just, you know, poorly didn't understand the numbers. But in la, and I went back fifty years, I just went back fifty years to see, you know, what's trending, where we're at. Um, lake's filled up eleven times in the last fifty, fifty years. It's filled up, uh, it's only filled up like, uh, three times in the last twenty-five years. It's only filled up once in the last seventeen years. And then I started taking, looking, so, you know, I was looking for, in the, this is on MW website, you know, it's, you know, what is the specification? How much rain have we got? Is that starting to drop? And, um, and it appears that every time the lake filled up or almost filled up over the last fifty years, we've gotten more than fifty inches of rain and we've got more fifty inches of rain in two thousand and nineteen. That was the Valentine's Day storm that got about a foot of rain, if we all remember that, especially in Big Bear City, other than Big Bear City. Um, and, um, and then of course this last year, you were in a hurricane. Um, and, um, and then of course this last year, when you were in a hurricane, and you missed, you know, that's a lot of rain on the Big Bear Lake, but, uh. And we had more than fifty inches of rain here, I went back and looked at that, and there's only twice now that the lake hasn't filled up. In the last fifty years, but fifty inches of rain. That's two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty three, now, this year, or about sixteen, I think we're about five or eight, I think this one is about five or eight. I looked at the trend line then, so I said, what happens if it just keeps going this direction? And I came up with some, I had some very dire numbers, that it looks like in the next four to five years, if the trend, if it stays the same, doesn't get worse, and it stays the same. We'll be back to about eighteen feet in about four years. And if it continues on, in about eight years, we'll be somewhere between twenty two and twenty four feet down. So then, I got out the fishing map, you know, the contour map and fish, because I want to see how deep the lake is. Surprisingly, Big Bear Lake is extremely shallow to get down to the dam. As a matter of fact, I think the lake broadly, and I, or Steve might say this, but I mean, it's from about Gilbert Point and Woody Point back eastward. I can't, the lake doesn't look like it averages that, can't be more than feet. Also a little bit interesting is the Big Bear Lake has this hump in it. It kind of, and as lake lies up, it pairs it, you know, east end has these little pockets, and most of the lake is down at the other side. But, but the reality of it is, is that, you know, the lake's unusable. And, you know, then I took one step forward, and I pulled out a chart. We both watched, and all I could find from an economic standpoint, how it affected us, and. There's twelve thousand launches in two thousand twelve, and then two thousand twenty eight, when we're down to eighteen, like five feet down. There's seven thousand seven hundred fifty eight, that is about a one, that's about a thirty, three, thirty five is a drop. I don't see either marine or reserve today, but, I mean, I mean, that's, somebody had to be affected by that for job, I mean, it. And, and, you know, the money just wasn't there for that industry, but obviously the lake, you know, provides much more than boating and fishing and all that. Um, and, you know, the, one of the truisms about Big Bear Valley. Is that, you know, all the jobs are in the city, or most of the jobs are in the city. And most of them always come, you know, from the, the county areas, I mean, it's just, that's the way it is. And we really can't separate the valley, I mean, we're all in this together. Um, I mean, we, and there's been some discussion today about, I almost have a feeling that, hey, we were talking about east versus west. But, you know, aquifers don't respect, respect, you know, jurisdictional lines. Um, and even water companies don't, you know, respect jurisdictional line, because Shetterlode is D W P, correct? It's not C S D. So, you know, we have to look at this, and then there's other things that come up, I've learned about snowmaking today, and of course, the fire department's concerned, I think a lot of us remember when the. Snow summer turned on, we sprayed, there were snowmaking equipment in the fire about three or four years ago. Um. You know, I, I guess that's just, you know, I mean, that, I guess that's my take on it, is that. Is that we're just kind of at this point, we've got to make a decision, you know, is it worth the risk not to move forward? I don't know, I. I, if, if, you know, if we move forward. Um, and obviously, if the lake keeps dropping, this is very associated with all the different things. If it gets, whether it's better, which, and let's, you know, see how that goes, it's not, it's not been all that great the last couple of years. Then we end up with some assets, you know, that we talked about, the walkover, and stick it back, and all that. And if we go the other route, I, it's just a gamble, it's, you know, and I would like to gamble, you know, jobs and businesses and. And, you know, how that could pursue the whole economy, and I just don't, I just can't imagine, you know, would, would you go to Vegas and, you know, you know. Bet your job, you know, on a thirty percent or forty percent chance that you might lose it, you know, I mean, I, you know, that's where we're at. That's serious of a decision. So I guess that's, you know, obviously, I, 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 I agree with Rick, I think we have to figure this out with the other three agencies. Um, I, I would support, you know, obviously, maybe, you know, coming back to this in sixty or ninety eight or something, I don't know. But I, I just can't imagine not moving forward with this project, I'd really be feared. That, you know, maybe not in my lifetime, but I'll, I'll, I'll hopefully have more than fifteen or twenty years. Um, that, you know, I, I hesitate to see that, I really, I mean, that, just, just because I love this valley so much. And the fall of life it provides for all of us, so. I don't know, but I'll take it back to the board, I, do we have a recommendation of how we can direct staff to move forward?
Well, I would, I would like to see more, um, firm agreements made, there's just a lot of. Oh yeah, this person will agree, yeah, that, you, you just wouldn't, you wouldn't buy a house like that, and like, figure it all out later. So there's a lot of questions there. And I, I hate to see it just on the taxpayer's back. This is how it feels right now. So I would like to see an advisory vote in the valley.
Hey, I will, okay, first off, I want everybody to know, this is only my second time in the board too, so I can't take credit for all this that's happened. But anyway, I am in C S D area, and, uh, my big problem is that. The, the people, the entities that we have. What, what is, is from two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, how come they haven't signed something in seven, eight years, whatever it is? And it's like, if they signed it, and it's like, now we know they're gonna do it, it would be different, but also, one thing I don't like is. Uh, C S D is not gonna get any amount of water for all intents and purposes for forty eight percent. And it's like, I'm sorry, but that isn't a good deal. And it's like, when I, okay, like I said, when I first heard about all this, you know, not too long ago. It was like, when they say four entities, I was thinking, okay, twenty five percent each for, for paying it, twenty five percent water we get. And if, the, uh, M W D sells, uh, the water, we should all get twenty five percent of it. And I, to me, that would be way more fair than hearing somebody, actually, uh, what do you call it? You had a, a good thing the other night about the water, like, well, both are trained too, I want to take it under way again, but he had a really good story about that, it's like. Okay, every time I go to the store, and this is sort of what, uh, Mr. Herrick was saying, you know, hopefully it's gonna be less. Every time I go to the store, no matter which one it is, it's never cheaper when I go in, it's always more expensive. And I don't see where, you know, uh, building materials and all that other stuff is gonna get any cheaper as we go. And I don't, like I said, there again, if, if the people who are building this thing said, okay, it's X amount of dollars, and this is it. And then the price of materials is that, but they signed it at that price, and to me, that's the way you do it. We have to buy two trash trucks, which are way ahead of what we need, because if we don't buy them, was it the Jan, December thirty first? If we didn't buy them, we were gonna have to buy electric trucks, so we're gonna have, we have two trucks, fortunately, it'd take a year and a half to build. But there again, it's like, everything's gonna go up, and it's like, I can't imagine that, that these guys come in, and we don't have the committee. From, like, say, M W D, or the, the resort area, it's like, I don't see where I would trust a handshake. And that's, that's what being, what if the people who are in charge now die? Okay, maybe the next guy comes and says, well, I was just gonna say something else, but the heck with those guys. It's like, no, we, we're not gonna do that for them, and to me, that's very possible. We're all not spring chickens anymore, and you never know, I think, I think Bob was saying something, we never know where, where you go. And what if we get some guy who doesn't like us anymore, or whatever, whatever, so, anyway. Yeah, I like this, the idea of this, but I can't say, uh, especially for C S D people, uh, forty seven percent or maybe ten percent of water. That we're gonna get it increased, to me, that's not worth it, so, that's my deal, thank you.
Thank you. Comments you want to take? Well, like I said, I think my position is very clear, I'm hoping that we pause a little bit, take the time, um. And that emotions doesn't land on our tables that kill the project at this time, that we, uh. We move forward with it, and we try to figure out some of these other details in here. They, they hold on, when you say short, it's a long term. I'm gonna, what's short and what's long?
So, uh, right now, what we have, what we have in play is, obviously, we have, you know, design contracts, all these other things moving forward. We have the E I R that's moving forward, there's a lot of different pieces of this puzzle that have been, you know, moved forward, uh, by the, by the agency. Um, the WIPI loan is, um, we're at a place where we have loan docs in place. Um, and waiting for the amendments to be signed, uh, those are the kind of things that we have, uh, going. I think most of, I mean, I, I, you know. I think that WIPI alone, probably, we could probably, you know, push it forward a few months. You know, three, four months for us to get what we need to make everybody feel comfortable. Far as, uh, agreements with, hopefully with M W D, that's the, you know, that seems to be the biggest issue. People are saying M W D has the biggest contribution, or the, the benefits of the project. Um, I'm sure, maybe we can structure something that would be agreeable to them at this point, to, um. You know, for some sort of commitment for them, uh, for the water, water moving forward. It is, you know, a, again, you know, we have taken steps, we do, we have had agreements with all, all three of the agencies. Our board has signed those agreements, I know not all of you have been here for that, but M W D has signed many different agreements. For this project. Funding it, moving it forward, do, making commitments all along, they've done that. We have, they have had it, we did send them a draft of letter of intent. They were reluctant based off of the fact that we still didn't have guidelines for our, our permits. Um, just yet, and we're, and obviously, we're, we've got more factual information about that, about our permits, so. You know, I would have to, you know, leave it to Steve and, and his general manager to decide whether, um. This would be a time where they could make some sort of commitment towards the, towards the project, um, you know, as far as that's concerned. I, I don't know about the ski resorts, that's gonna be something that D W P and, and M W D and C S D are gonna have to work out. A lot of this doesn't even pertain to our, our project, because our project stops at when we. You know, when we deposit the water. So it's really difficult to have this project tied to agreements that we don't even need, we're. We're, all we are is, uh, this is just a more expensive method of disposal. So I can either dispose all of it down the stream, or dispose it in the lake, either way. There is, you know, when people talk about benefits to the project, far as how much water we're gonna get, or, I don't know. The, the problem that this is not our responsibility here. This is not our charge, not our, you know, it's not in our purview to, about water sustainability or any of those things, it's only about disposal of this water. If, if the valley as a whole feels like it's benefit, it's a benefit to have additional water in, in the lake. For recreational, economic habitat. Um, and water sustainability, if there's a value to the, the, the community for those, that concept. Then this is the project for the, you know, for our, for our agency. If it doesn't, then obviously it's not, but I understand what C S D is concerned with, far as their, you know. You know, the, the, the amount of water that they get out of the project, if, if, you know, that is something that. You know, Reggie and Glenn can work out those details, but it's not a detail here. I, I can tell you, the only detail that I could see here is an agreement to dispose of water into M W D. That would be, that would be the agreement that I could see us, us getting, is that detail, far as. If, what they pay for, if they pay for it, all those things, we can try working those details out, but again, probably coming down the line as we get closer to. Um, uh, production of, of this water.
Yeah. What is the, uh. I mean, you, you, I know you're gonna have to find this out, I'll call up the, the WIPI deadline, and other docs and everything else. If they understand the position we're in, to give us a date, six months, nine months, whatever it happens to be. Can you get that information?
I can give that, I shall.
Um, the second thing is, we know we have different rates for the city and C S D.
Yes.
Um, for Warren, it's based upon, it's like traditional equity.
Right, it's seventy, seventy percent fair, then thirty percent variable rate based on the flow.
Okay. Um, how hard would it be to look at rejuggling that? How much time would you need to do that? Well, and it might be a totally different philosophy as far as flow, if fixed costs are concerned. Um. And, and I'm saying something that might not fly on a city level, but I'm, I'm willing to, I think we should look at that as well.
I mean, ob- obviously, there have been in the past, there have been different, um, amendments to our J P A. That had different methods of, of, uh. You know, of billing, for, for billing purposes, rate structures, you know, and those kind of things. Um, it's definitely something we can look at, but I'm, I'm not quite sure how it helps, but maybe it does, um, I would have to leave it to. Uh, the member agencies, yeah, yeah, and the member agencies would have to sign amendments and all those kind of things too, and. And the whole, those things, and we'd have to, you know, come up with some concepts, I'd have to get a little more direction, exactly what you were looking to do, or what the board was looking to do. Or far as all the amendments, um, as, you know. And we could get, you know, obviously, we could do any, any amendment we've done before, when it comes to those things, but we just have to be, we'd have to understand the, the concept that, that the board was looking to do.
What I'm reaching for is a pause time.
Right.
For us to get some of these, these things done. Uh, obviously, give C S D a little bit more time as well, to, um, to kind of work through it. Um. Without having the thing blow up, I mean, if it's gonna blow up anyways, there's no point. So, but if we, there's a window, it says it's three months, six months, nine months, whatever it is, I think.
Then, I mean, at this point, we haven't told WIPI a no. Uh, that's a good thing, cause that's, that, that I would consider, I, I could in all. In, you know, in all sincerity, recommend to the board during a project placement. I, I don't think it's reasonable, it's not a reasonable cost, there's no money generated, I mean, right, so, off the table. So this just comes down to the WIPI alone, and whether C S D will consider the amendment, or reconsider the amendments again. Um, and what that would take for C S D to want to consider that amendment again. So that's what it comes down to, is what is it gonna take, what is it, what is it that they would like to see in place to make that happen, whether it's. Agreements with, uh, I mean, we already have an agreement with C S D and D W P for the, for the letter of intent for, for those two. You know, a, a letter of intent from, from M W D, is, is that what, would it take to make, to, uh, make. C S D feel more comfortable about signing the amendment at that point, I, you know, that's a question for them to, um, to answer. Um. That's the only thing that I could say at this point, the, everything else, the agreements with the, the, the ski resorts, the ski resorts don't really benefit from this project. I mean, I, I know everybody else may have a difference of opinion, but the, the reality is. They're not really using, they're not asking for additional water. At this point, that, to my knowledge, they're not asking for additional water from this project.
Look, I don't want to interrupt you, but I don't want to bait those tracks.
Right, okay.
I just want to focus in on how much time we need.
Right, and I, I have to get back to you on the time for the WIPI loan, because that's, that was what I would consider the blow up piece. Is the WIPI loan, uh, and how much time we could take to get that under, uh, and, and to, you know. How much time they would, they would give us to, uh, move forward with that amendment before they would say. Okay, you can get considered next round or never. Once we get to that point where we're at next round or never, it's pretty much a, a done, a done deal. At that point.
So we need to know that, uh, and I, I'm just gonna throw this out there, and this is just one council member speaking. Um, we have. Funds available through T O T that might be funneled this direction, that would then make up the difference, and make it more equitable on the C S D side for the numbers. I can't guarantee anything, but I will push hard to get that on our personal agenda for the city council, uh, in order to allow them. Um, again, I don't know exactly how that'll work, but I know that at least in my mind, it's forgivable. Um, then, I think if we can do something like that, equity pushing might cure itself. Um, possibly. I'm just gonna suggest, uh, I know you're giving me that book.
I am giving you.
But I can suggest an agenda, and it's like anybody else, and it could be voted on, you'd either vote it up or vote it down, but then. And I know there's a lot of hands sticking out to.
Everybody's looking at the T O T, right?
I, I understand, I understand, but I'm not gonna debate it with you now, I'm just, I'm gonna like to get it on our agenda that might. At least we have an opportunity to talk about, actually, that particular time. Um, and as far as agreements are concerned, I mean. Gosh, uh, it'd be great to have them all of us. Gosh, uh, it'd be great to have them all at once. That's all, all I have to say about that. Uh, and I hope that something like that does take place. If, if possible moment, we come back to this and we try to keep this thing alive.
Is there, is there like any clear, like maybe Larry want to shed some light that might help you make feel more comfortable? About, is there an agreement that we can get in place with an agency? Or multiple, whatever it's going to take to make you feel more comfortable to move this project forward. Is there, is there a? Tell me what that looks like. There are some people in the room old enough to remember when you'd see a Packard rolling down the street. They were one of the few elegant quality cars to survive the Great Depression. Their advertising at one point, which apparently Rolls Royce thought enough up to steal the tagline. Was that a reputation built by many acts can be destroyed by one. When you see your paper newspaper. Instead of reporting the who, what, where, when and why of a story. Prints instead thinly veiled opinion pieces or editorials. Mr. Russo mentioned. My tale of the high speed bullet train. They promised to build it. Train that would travel two hundred and twenty miles an hour with you from LA to San Francisco in two hours and forty minutes. That bond measure passed in two thousand eight and projected completion by twenty twenty. As of twenty twenty four, no portion of that railroad is actually in operation. They now admit it may be twenty thirty four before any of it is. They haven't even bought any of the engines, but they are now one hundred billion dollars over budget. My concern is that whatever you decide, whatever facts you bring back to us. I'm really. Wary. Wary, either one.
Either one.
Of the facts that will be brought in, I have to be able to trust that when you tell me. This is what we can do for this amount of money. I don't want to start out being told it's fifty million. And less at the budget, it may be six point seven. Even if you go back and take the twenty two million off the continue. That's like over fifteen percent over what we were originally told. I have strong doubts and if you're going to present options to me, they have to be. Filled out enough. Solid is a good word, that I can make a decision that protects. Not only Barwa, but CSD, which is my first priority. And, and the other thing I would say is obviously we're, we're working off estimates right now until we bid the project. So if you would like hard numbers. If you would like to, you, and then at that point you can go out and decide if you want hard numbers. And you want to bid this project and then decide whether to award or not, or not. That's up to you guys. You guys have that charge. I can't award a project. You guys are the only ones that are going to award a project. So if you want me to take this forward until we get to a point where we're going to bid this project, I can do that. It will still take funding to, to move forward and finish out the things that we have going to get us to that point. Where we are bidding a project. And then you'll know, and then you can decide at that point whether you want to move forward or not at that point. If that's what you're asking for, that's probably, I can give you estimates. The estimates, you know, with the, the next update is due. Um, in the design programs, we have a design. The basis of, basis of design validation. So they take the pilot, the pilots that we're nearly finished with. And they design the project in concept on paper. And then they go back and they estimate the design and bring that back. And it validates, it's an up to date validated. Project cost at that point. I'm happy to do that and bring that forward to the board for consideration at that point. And if they decide, oh, I don't want to move forward at that point. You can, you can make that choice then as well. You can make a choice to, to turn back this, this project. It's not going to stop us from, we still have to spend money to get to that point. We're still going to have to spend money to finish the EIR to get us to a, to a place where we can, you know. You, you get a loan so that way we can move forward with the piece and get you to that validation piece. I, I don't know how I'll offer you a number. I've been doing this for, like I said, for seven years. I've been offering a, a number every time we get a. Where we're at a point where we can offer a, a, a. Um, a more refined number to, to my board. I've offered those numbers every time I've gotten them. I haven't come back with a new number since two, March of point three. With a, a new number for construction. I understand what you're seeing on the screen and you understand, you know, the reasons why it's on the screen that way. Uh, far as the eighty six million dollars. This is not a bullet train. I don't build bullet trains.
I think, yeah, I think we're bad about this. I think we're talking about. It's, somebody, somebody's got to make a motion on this.
Can, can I ask, I mean, I, I realize you've made it clear that you only have three customers and, you know, where your responsibility ends. But was it ever discussed to put it to a vote to the people?
Yes.
Yes, it was. In twenty one, twenty two, the board discussed that.
I just don't remember that. I mean, I've been up here forever.
So, no, we didn't put it, we didn't discuss it. It was discussed.
Oh, you discussed inside.
Over and over again, yes. It was discussed.
Because it's like we're asking the people to pay for this. But we talk about tourism and, you know, people don't want to come up here and lots of jobs. But I don't see some of the big stakeholders, you know, putting in money toward the project.
I understand. I understand that. And I'm just taking a sample. The people who are here, the majority feel the project is worthwhile. They have concerns about cost. They have concerns about equity, they have concerns about contracts and agreements.
And taxes.
I hear that. I, I think that's the equity portion. That's how I equate equity.
So, so you, you think that it would be better to have the residents of Big Bear Lake?
I don't, I don't know, but I want to discuss it. I did, this should not be a promoting subject. Should be an open subject that we talk about. We voted to move forward with raising the TOT, as you know. It went to a vote of the public. The public voted that, you know, that TOT is sitting there now and part of it's not allocated. It should be allocated, it should be us, 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 us up to discuss how we do that. It's, uh, it's not a staff decision. That is a council decision.
When I'm pushing for concrete. My first would be Mr. Herrick's question about. How long do we have with Wiffy before it becomes a collapse? And it just, it's a, a lost issue.
Okay.
Then the other would be. You say you can only give me estimates. I'm still concerned that what I've heard in these meetings, what I've seen from the multiple presentations in the community. Versus what I read in the EIR. I still see. The reputation has been tarnished. So I need some ability to go through and say, okay. This can work, this will work, and it's affordable. In other words, I'm not saying right now kill it. But if you can't. Persuade me within the near future in that time allotment you have to deal with it alone. I still have homes.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from Larry is concerned about how long we have to blow up. And Dave, you think what, three, up off your head, six months, three months?
I would say by the end of summer, we probably, you know, we're probably will be out of their funding. Cycle. And that's probably, I can get that exact date from them. I, I didn't ask that date because I, I didn't know that this was going to become a question. But let me ask that question about when we would be exiled of their funding cycle and overlooked at that point. I, I will definitely ask that and then.
Find that out personally in the room. They could, they're first.
Sure. Yeah. When you gave the numbers for the rate increases. At the end of the five year cycle, how much money did you expect that to generate? There is. Is, it is, uh. I think. Right now, I think it's projected, what, what was the RBB rates? Twenty five dollars per EU. For just a grid compliance figure. That's per month multiplied by twelve at the end. No, how much, how much would it generate? Uh, on, I think is that year twenty eight or twenty, twenty eighteen? I would expect it to be in the area of millions. It is in an area of millions for sure. And maybe I can save you calculation time by saying, my point is. Yes, I understood that if this didn't go through, there was always. The very residual potential, it would all have to be paid back. That's correct. What I'm looking at then is if you've already agreed to these rate increases. Would they generate enough to pay back nine, ten, twelve million dollars? Oh, almost definitely. That's not, that's not the issue, but I, but do you really want to implement rates that you, on some, a project that you're not pursuing? It's going to have to be paid back, right? I mean, it's not far what it's going to be. City, Big Bear Lake, CSD and county. That's right. And that's what that whole change in the contract was. City approved it. It came, well, the previous agreement. City approved it, CSD approved it, county said, oh wait a minute, we want to rewrite it. So then it had to go back and be approved again and again. This time, city approved it. It came back to the CSD and I was told it was because they wanted assurances that the, they would not be on the hook for anything more. Than a certain percentage of the project. It, it was, the wording's not that way. Yeah, the, the wording is written by an attorney, right? And the attorney and the, and the wording is written by the attorney. And it's based off of our operating agreements. So every agency would be only responsible for their portion of the EDUs that can contribute to Barwa. So every portion is a portion of share of every agency that's, that's sitting at this table. And it's back to the reputation, only. Faith in what's being said that, okay, if we get this all done, can somebody come in and change all this agreement again? Are you talking about the, the agreement that we are all parts of it? Well. Last I spoke with the county, they agreed to the amendments. They were, that, they were agreeing to the amendments that. With their wording. With, well, no, originally their wording was they wanted a dollar figure in there. And the, and, and our attorney, our borrower attorney said, no, 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 no. You can't do that. It has to be equitable among all of our member agencies. So you can't put a dollar figure. What you can do is base it off of our operating agreement, where our operating agreement is based off of equitable share. Of Barwa's. Budget. Or EDU, excuse me, EDU, which is essentially our budget. But you've also said that the impact on the plan from the city, from the CSD, from the county. Shifts within a year. More from the city in the winter, more from the CSD in summer. Flow rate, yes. And yet, in the last year, it didn't do that. And when we come to the budget hearing on the twenty eighth. Then it becomes CSD forty eight, city forty seven, county five. That this, which is it going to be then in terms of that arrangement of equity? Right, and so the, the, what you're maybe not, I haven't made fully clear, it's based off of number of EDUs. In this agreement is based off of number of EDUs. But not flow? But not flow, because flow does change, right? And so it's based off of the number of EDUs, so that means, I, I, I can't recall exactly, but you're. You know, eleven thousand something to see. It was.
Twelve.
Yes. So that's the way that was done. Um, and that's the way this agreement was amended is to, to do that way because the attorneys felt that that was equitable. Equitable or. In the range of equity, that means that a five bedroom, six bath house. Upon Castle Glen and the one bedroom, one bath in Sugarloaf or Fonskin pays exactly the same because each one's considered.
EDU is like a. Twelve hundred square foot house with about fifty, one and a half baths and a kitchen and dryer. Water, it's based on fixture unit. I'll find checks my way and count the fixtures.
So.
It's not, it's not what you think it is, or it's not a, it, it's based on, you know, for example, if you have. Restaurant, you know, five.
I'm not trying to commercial.
Or a home, or if you have a home with five, five bathrooms, ten bedrooms and, you know, a guest house and a kitchen, they could have five or six EDUs.
Can, can I help a little bit, guys? Just to clarify. Uh, this issue is, so. Mr. Lanson and CSD's. Water fixtures count and their pay per EU and their capital facilities per EU. We, we as Barwa are based off of. A single family residential home is a single family residential home. So five bedrooms is same as one bedroom. It's always been that way. It's, that's been that way for fifty four years. Fifty four, fifty three years, fifty three years. It's been the same way. The only difference is the commercial. The commercial has more EDUs based off of. Number of restaurant seats, whatever, the way that things are. But you're correct, Mr. Walsh, that, that is one hundred percent of the way it is and, and we have. We've had discussion in the past about making changes to that. The, 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 it's a just a difference of going through, you can't, we don't have flow meters. That's why it works through DWP. We don't have those. We, all we can say is. And the other part that you have to, to take into consideration, the five unit in. In Castle Glen may have an occupancy of once per month. And the single family residential home in Sugarloaf may have a full time occupant. And so when that discussion all took place years ago, there was. Hey, this doesn't really. Jive to make, to move it all and make it so much more complicated than one EDU for one residential home. It just was, when, when we had that whole discussion years ago, it just didn't pan out. So we could have that other discussion about changing the EDUs if, if the board wants that. You know, look through that process. It, 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 there are other. You know, wastewater facilities that do stuff like that, but at this point. Whatever the city charges. I don't really throw a cherry bomb in there. But well, here we go. I'm sitting down. You mentioned the big house can't be, or the smaller house. Oh, yeah, but could be. We've got the situation in recent years of. A single family in my neighborhood that manages to rent out. God knows how many people were there, at least ten cars were parked. All right, but they're paying their impact out here based on EDUs, are they not? They are paying exactly the same as everybody else. So ten people, so in that one person, they're overloading versus the one that is under load. It, it, it can happen, you bet. And they can. It's a different discussion. Take those expenses off of their income from that rental, whereas I can't. Well, and the difference is, that's why we do seventy percent fix and thirty percent, seventy percent fix. And thirty percent flow is to deal with those issues where you have ten people. That come in and if it's the city or CSD that sends us more flow, they. They get to pay a higher rate per E D U than the other agencies do, and that's just based off of their. Equitable share of the entire flow rate that comes into that thing. So that's what they, this, to summarize that. You know, the, the, the current um. Payment plan that, uh, the, plan that we have in place for, for uh, rate structure. Is, you know, that's how they dealt with it. The seventy and thirty.
Which is why, when you do the presentation at the C S D.
Yes.
I was not out to disparage you, I called it a shell game.
Okay.
Because as a kid. During the winter. We've got the three Dixie cups and a pen. It goes clear back to Elizabethan period when it was a dried out pea inside half a walnut shell. That's why it's called the shell game. You put the pea under, the guy moves it around, you're supposed to keep your eye on it. Did you pick the right one or not? That's with all these moving parts, that's why I called this a shell game. Trying to keep your eye on all the moving parts. Is what's required, but really hard to do.
Right, and, and that's why you had me to look at every moving part that you have and try and. Give you all the information I can at every single moment and, and, and a lot of this has to do with the fact that. Except for two of you. The rest of you weren't even on the board. When this, you know, a lot of this information were presented in the past. And, and I know it's confusing and I know it's, you're like, whoa, wait a minute. And I know maybe some of this information didn't make it back to you, uh, you know, from the other board members. They were making decisions, sitting on this board in the past, which is, I, I know.
We were never presented with the different ideas of how to do E D Us at this level.
Okay.
And so.
I mean, this is, this is before my time.
Yeah, yeah, but it was never presented in such a way that you two are talking about. And I, I hate to say, we're getting, we're wandering off the agenda pretty far.
Right.
Now, I need uh, some kind of recommendation for where we wanna go. I've got another meeting next week and tomorrow.
Next week.
Next week.
I have a motion. Um, I would like to see it put to an advisory vote in the community. And secure agreements with M W D and B B M R.
And then you can get another motion.
Okay, I uh, my suggestion, I understand what you said.
I would, I would like to put it to an advisory vote in the community. And also that we secure agreements or Barwa or whoever secures agreements from M W D and B B M R.
I will second that. And now we're discussing.
Yes, let's discuss the motion.
It's, it comes with a motion.
Well, I, I, my own question on is that, you know, it's probably too late to put it on, but then, and I don't know how you do it. Well, I'd like to do a special actual. That's where my wife, she said, why shouldn't? Well, how are you gonna do advisory unless you put out a ballot?
Well, is it a, one of the polls, or mail in your absentee? Or should you mail out and we have people return? Is that sufficient?
Well, that's kind of a sample, I, I don't know.
And do we also stipulate that? The board is bound. Obligated, committed to whatever that decision is.
That, that was one in the motion. Um. So you'd have to amend your motion where, where, what's your rest of the dinner? What, do you know, David, what it, what it's an advisory vote takes to do?
I mean, when we looked at this last time, when we had this discussion about putting anything on the ballot, it, they said nine, fifteen months to get it. Unless we do a special election. I don't know the timeframe on a special election. I don't know the cost of putting a special ballot.
We kind of do, just for the city, it's about two hundred thousand dollars.
So, and, and just for the city, and, and we're much bigger that, cause we covered the entire valley, including. I mean, they, our jurisdiction actually goes. All the way out to Baldwin Lane, Lake Williams, places that don't even have service, but we still cover that and we would still. Have to get the vote of, of people that don't even have our service. To have that, you know, that, that out there and.
So then it also begs the question, is it sent on to all the E D U payers? Or citizens? Our residents, our constituents.
And, and is it the, is it the vote, is it the voter? I, I, I would have to talk to the attorney to find out if it was just a voter base.
But we can do it either way.
Yes.
Mailer.
Uh, it's the voter base, if, if, if it's the entire property owners, it depends on. If it's shifting a biography, by the way, you know, that, there's no, it's not binding, you know what I mean? So that's part of the issue with that, um, but. Just a, I mean, you're basically likely cooked the project if you go that route. Just so you know, I mean, it's, it's probably over.
If the window is only open.
It actually looked down.
It, it's probably over and the reason I say it's probably over, because by the time you've got, we got to a ballot and got it out there and got the vote and got it all done. The Wiffy loan is probably closed. And probably some of our grant opportu, our grants, because we have performance. Markers in our grants, that would probably kill um, some of the grants as well.
Were you proposing a ballot measure or? A, a strong?
I don't know, a mechanism for the, the people that are paying the taxes.
Well, if a real life election ballot measure, what are you gonna call it again, was two hundred fifty thousand? And would take nine to fifteen months to get on the ballot?
I, I would say, just to correct it, probably five hundred thousand.
Okay.
Is this the entire ballot? That's a discussion.
Then it sounds like it would be. More fiscally responsible to go for a. What did you call it in your motion?
Advisory.
Advisor, rather than a ballot major.
Can I, can I uh, ask before we're gonna take a vote on that?
Is, is there anything that definitely, if you're gonna put it on the ballot, I mean, is there a difference between an advisory vote and a? No, I mean, it's, it's, you can put it on the ballot, it's an advisory vote, you don't. Same thing as a ballot, any initiative, right? You have all the same requirements. Same.
Same notification to them, but if before, just my suggestion. Let me come back to you next week when we have a meeting with. Some options, some facts for you as opposed to. You know, some real costs, some real timeframes, some real.
You have time to gather, what I'll call a staff report to get, bring all this together. And lay it out for us so that it's really clear. And we can make a decision at that time, because we're only, we're only burning one V if that's.
If that's the case, I mean, we only have, we're realistically, we, we have to get our agenda out by Friday, right? And that's, that's what we're, that's what we're, and today is, what's Tuesday, today's Tuesday. Um, not a whole lot of time. Hopefully, we could gather as much information as possible, but we could present what we could to you at that point. I'm not, you know, um, and then stuff that we didn't have, we'd have to follow up at the following meeting after that. To um, to, you know, de, deal with it at that point.
Okay, so my, my substitute motion for the motion is that. Um, we urge you to get this on our next agenda and call us all the information that you've got from the board and from the public so that we can make a clear decision. Next week, and you, you understand, we have to find out the Wiffy information.
Yep.
Uh, and there's one moving parts.
There's a lot of moving parts, yeah. He wants to go lead to withdraw.
What's that?
He wants to go lead to withdraw, I know she doesn't have to, I did a substitute. All right, this is up to the motion, then you need a second.
Yes.
So I got it.
Are we ready for roll call? Yep.
So we have a substitute motion. Could you restate that, please, you can stay with that extended.
You want advisory information and deadlines on the Wiffy loan?
That, and again, bringing all the pieces that we've talked to us to give the options for Tuesday, so we, we can make a very clear decision. Right now, we're talking about things that are not even on the agenda, and that's not right to do for the public, for us either.
Okay.
So.
They can't hear you.
No.
I can say.
To take all the information that we have right now. And the assignment is, my motion is to give this to staff to work this out so that in our next meeting, we can actually make clear decisions based upon what our agenda's lined out and give you clear direction of what.
And, and the only caveat that I'll say is, I have three days. So not a whole lot of time. I'm gonna do my very best to get you as much as I can, that accomplished as much as I can in that three days. Um, we'll, we'll.
We'll clock this soon.
I know, I get it. The day is still young, and it's only six o'clock, we have, we have a few more hours of the day line, so.
And David, doesn't have to all be the staff, it's like, find out information after that.
Right, we'll put it in your presentation. Yeah, we'll put it in the presentation. The, the agenda, well, and it may not, it may be received uh, a presentation about.
As long as we can take action.
Right, exactly. Most of them.
And whatever's on the agenda has to be seventy-two hour notes.
We, we'll have it out by Friday, it's a regular meeting, it's a regular meeting. We, we have, we have Friday. The only other thing that be, you know, that was supposed to be on the agenda is our budget. And.
Can we talk about after we finish this?
Sure.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Vice Chair Herrick?
Hi.
Director Russo?
No. I want to say that I want number three. And uh, if this helps progress things along, then so be it. Okay.
Director Segovia?
No.
Director Walsh?
Hi.
And Chair Miller.
Hi.
The motion question.
We will have something, so. I don't make many, I need, I didn't, I mean, it was a lot, I didn't really also, I mean. That was classified as. Yeah. We're done with this item, um. And we're up to public uh, public forum because we continue to have, but if those in the room feel like the needs and. Phil, Phil fix dinner or go have dinner, I don't know, please don't hesitate to read the meeting out there.
Unless they have something that's not on the agenda.
If you have something that's not on the agenda, then we just talk about, this is the times, our public forum, we have three minutes to, to address the board. And we have not talked about, absolutely not about food, we're only figuring projects. Is there anybody that has anything? Not about the replenished projects that they're about to come. All right, seem done. There was one question now about.
The budget, so the budget is on, is, is supposed to be on the agenda so we can make sure that our member agencies get their, their budgets on time.
Right.
The budget does include an eighteen percent increase for the replenished Big Bear project. Then, we understand. We will, I can, I can tell you now, sitting right here, we, either way, whatever action the board takes, whether to move forward or to not move forward with the project. We will still need funding to do whatever we need to accomplish.
Is that about eighteen percent?
Eighteen percent is a solid number that we would, that we would still need to make sure we can cover the debts that we have in place.
Do you have enough time to figure out what that one is?
To figure out what.
We don't know what.
We, we, the problem with that is there are. Let's say, um, in, there is interest and penalties that we would have to pay back this to some of the um, grant agencies. And we're not likely to get that information back in time to provide that to the board, so. My recommendation, because either way, you'd still need that eighteen percent to cover whatever you, you know, whatever we, the obligations that we have today. And that we're going to continue to, to have until we clear this mess up.
Discussion for our meeting. Yeah, yeah, we're starting to discuss it.
Okay.
Um, but um.
So I just need to make sure, I, I let you know, I'm putting it.
I would suggest then, if we run into a time crunch at next week's meeting, we call another special meeting. By the end of the week in order to cover, to make sure we get the commission out for the member agencies.
Okay.
We know, we know, I know it's, we're asking a lot.
Yeah, you, you can't do a bud, you can't do a budget adoption or, or rate adoption, rate adoption. At a special meeting, you have to do it at a, at a, so we'll have that discussion at the next meeting. And then you guys can decide whether to move forward or what, what, how to handle that next. Okay. I just, I'm trying to make all, all of you aware of the situation that we're in a bit.
Right.
Thanks.
All right, are there any comments from board members before we adjourn? So.
Well.
I, I just wanna restate that it's a forward-thinking project. And um, you know, I'm not against the project. I just wish the people had had more say in it.
All right, it's great. Congress, Larry?
Whether I agree with them or not, some people came up with uh, really great presentations. As to what their concerns were and how we should do best on it, and I appreciate that. And people were civil. I know at the budget meeting. I was essentially called a thief and a liar and some other things, just because I was rated as a politician. And that makes it kind of hard to listen to after that part, to what they had to say. So they was manageable.
I just wanna say thank you for everybody coming out, because this is what we need when we are working on big projects like this. It's painful at times. Uh, but uh, it's essential, because uh, again, I think, actually, Herrick, you know how important this project is. And if we throw the baby out with the bathwater, I think we're making, making a major mistake. Let's continue to work forward on this and thank you all.
And I agree with that. Thank you for pointing out tonight, that was a four hour item, I don't feel like, I mean, too many.
Other agencies.